All right. Good afternoon. Hello, everybody. I'm Dan Grotnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. First off, I would like to wish a happy Diwali to all who celebrate. I want to welcome you all to today's review session. We have an assortment of proposals before us, ones that look to bring new commercial development to several boroughs and others that will bring new housing. Before getting into our agenda, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that we are holding a second remote public information session this Thursday at 7:00 on Mayor Adams' City of Yes initiatives, led by the Department of City Planning. These three in-development sets of zoning rule changes will help us to achieve carbon neutrality, economic development initiatives, and housing goals. And I urge anyone listening to come and join us and ask questions and give us your feedback. We hope you'll get involved and help us make sure that our city's economy continues to rebound well into the future. This is an important moment to create a more equitable, healthier, and happier New York City. I will note that Thursday's gathering is the second public information session we have held so far on these initiatives. We are trying to move away from a model of presenting a final product and asking for the blessing of everyone around us. We're shaping these plans in real time, and as we build these proposals to members of the public, we are looking forward to hearing from you. Details about how to join or simply watch the session on livestream are available at nyc.gov/engage. And of course, we will be doing commission-specific briefings in the coming months. Speaking of hearing from the public, you may have seen news stories about last week's city council hearing on Innovation Queens. I just note this to remind the commission and the public that this project is actively moving through the final stage of the Eular process and that we are expecting the council to vote on it in the coming weeks. Stay tuned on this one. Okay, back to today's agenda, which features several projects starting public review at certification, including 2560 Boston Road, which is a 100% affordable building in Allerton in the Bronx. If approved, the residents that would live in the 330 apartments there would be right on top of a brand-new supermarket blocks away from the 2 and 5 subway and near Bronx Park. We will also hear about 58 Nixon Court, a nine-story housing project in Brooklyn's Gravesend community along Ocean Parkway. With ground-floor retail, this development would bring 21 new homes, five of them permanently income-restricted. Both this and the Bronx project are set, interestingly enough, on triangular development sites. I will note that we are seeing more irregular sites being developed in our city as we continue to add housing and job space that was previously overlooked. We have a lot of homes and jobs to create, so this is important stuff. In Long Island City, 2310 Queens Plaza South, we'll hear about a plan to turn a vacant four-story commercial building into a 26-story office complex near two major subway stations, both Queensborough Plaza and Queens Plaza. This is an important sign of our city's economic recovery and notable because it shows that despite the significant challenges of the last few years, people continue to bet on office space in the city, including office space closer to where people live. We will also hear about the redevelopment of the Otis Elevator Building at 260 11th Avenue in the Chelsea area of Manhattan. This project seeks permission to enlarge an existing historic building, which served as the former offices for the famed elevator company. While it served as commercial space throughout its history, this is another great example of New York City betting on office space closer to residential communities. Then, planning staff will brief on a few items coming for public hearing this Wednesday. This time, as we normally do, we will be having our review session on Monday and our hearings on Wednesday. We're not collapsing them into the same meeting this time. And those items for public hearing include the relocation of EMS Number 7 in Hudson Yards, a development to enable a new six-story mixed-use building with a supermarket expansion in Corona, Queens, and a proposal to expand an auto showroom in Woodside, also Queens. Today, we're also going to have, or we will also have, a special permit renewal and a scope determination from the council. So that's what we've got. It's not a short agenda, so I hope everybody is well caffeinated and ready to go. Ryan, I'm going to turn it to you, and we will get started.
Certainly. So just to reiterate, this is the New York City Planning Commission for Monday, our review session for Monday, October 24, 2022. The time is 1:05 PM, and a quorum is present in the hearing room at 1:20 Broadway. The first item on our agenda is the certification of a zoning map, zoning text amendment, and a special permit in Queens Community District 2. Our presenter is Teal Daly. Teal?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'll be presenting 2310 Queens Plaza South for certification. This is a private application for a project located in Long Island City in Community District 2 of Queens. The proposed development is a 22-story enlargement of an existing four-story commercial building, and this would result in approximately 320,000 square feet of commercial floor area. To facilitate the development, the applicant is requesting several land use actions. The first is a zoning map amendment that would rezone an M15R9 district to an M16R9 district. The second is a zoning text amendment that would change the Queens Plaza sub-district of the Special Long Island City Mixed-Use District. The text amendment would establish an Area D that is coterminous with the project area, maximum FARs, as well as minimum and maximum base heights. And third, the applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to the Queens Plaza Subdistrict Text or Zoning Section 117533. This special permit is built into the Queens Plaza Subdistrict zoning text in order to provide a pathway for bulk modifications for any lot located within the sub-district pursuant to a set of findings that I will share later. The applicant seeks to modify the distance between buildings and the street wall location requirements. The render on the slide shows the proposed development, which includes approximately 13,100 square feet of local retail, 7,500 square feet of exhibit and community meeting space, 300,800 square feet of office space, and also a rooftop terrace with a restaurant is proposed. Long Island City has long been identified as an important location to establish a central business district due to its location at the center of the city and its excellent access to infrastructure that includes eight different subway lines. This area has a long history of industrial uses, producing a range of pre-war loft buildings, and many housing, industrial, and commercial uses are in these loft buildings today. The Special Long Island City Mixed-Use District was established in 2001 to leverage LIC's productive heritage to support the continued growth of a mixed-use neighborhood with an opportunity for high-density commercial uses within a transit-rich area. The map on the left shows the broader Special Long Island City Mixed-Use District, which spans many blocks across the Dutch Kills, Queens Plaza, Court Square, and Hunters Point neighborhoods. For this application, I'll zoom into the Queens Plaza Subdistrict, which contains 34 blocks that were identified as the central business district at the adoption of the Mixed-Use District. Goals of the sub-district included facilitating mixed-use development, including commercial, residential, light industrial, and community facility uses. And these uses would be contained by a variety of building types that generally have high lot coverage and strong street walls that reflect the sub-district's diverse built fabric. And transparent glazing plantings or artwork is also required for the ground-floor portions of most new buildings. Additionally, the highest allowable densities for new developments were proposed for blocks at Queens Plaza and Court Square, which are the sub-district's two largest subway nodes. At the time of the adoption of the special district, residential development had not been expected to proliferate in the Long Island City core, and the FARs were weighted evenly between residential and non-residential uses in order to allow flexibility among different uses. In the 2010s, we ultimately saw a boom of housing production with many residential towers constructed in the core, and many of these were on sites that had been anticipated for a commercial development. Construction since 2010 has produced approximately 20,000 new housing units, mostly in towers that range in height from 9 to 67 stories. Some of these towers were developed on sites anticipated for commercial development, also on sites that were located next to transit, but ultimately, the development trends leaned heavily into residential construction largely due to the sunset of 421A. To date, the district has seen commercial growth occur primarily in the retrofit of existing loft buildings, while the development of new commercial buildings typically relied on some form of city subsidy or disposition. There are three distinct subareas within the sub-district as identified by maximum FARs and general bulk regulations. The development site is located in Subarea B, which is indicated in the light orange color on the map. And the chart shows the basic zoning regulations of the three subareas. For Area B, the maximum FAR for all uses is eight, and the base height must be between 100 feet at a minimum and 150 feet at a maximum. And on this map, Area B is shown by the blue outline, and the project area is in pink. The project area is located on the western edge of the sub-district. This transit-rich location provides proximate access to four different stations within approximately a quarter mile of the site. These include the Queensborough Plaza Station, which provides access to the NW and 7 trains. Also, the Queens Plaza Station provides access to the EM and R trains. The F train is accessible from the 21st Street Queensbridge Station, and it's also the only train with a stop on Roosevelt Island. And Court Square provides access to the E, the G, the M, and the 7 trains. Additionally, several buses are accessible from Queens Plaza South, including the Q39, the Q66, the Q69, and the Q102. And the Queensborough Bridge of Greenway runs along Queens Plaza North, connecting to parks, area bike lanes, and Manhattan. Queensbridge Houses are located two blocks to the northwest of the project site, and we've also had a couple of recent projects in the area that I'll highlight. The city's first zoning-for-accessibility transit bonus authorization was recently approved in July on the north side of Queensborough Plaza Station at 2501 Queens Plaza North. And the 4211 Ninth Street IBIA project, which was adopted by city council in March of 2021, is located seven blocks to the west. The project area is made up of two tax blocks, I'm sorry, two lots on Block 425, as indicated by the yellow lots on the tax map. Tax Lot 5 is approximately 27,000 square feet in area, and Tax Lot 1 is just under 15,000 square feet in area, for a total of approximately 42,000 square feet and functioning as a single zoning lot. The zoning lots in the project area emerged in 2018, and so the floor area will be calculated across both lots. A residential building was completed within the project area in 2015 on the southern lot. The 44-story building has approximately 310,000 square feet of floor area, or 7.37 FAR, with 391 dwelling units and 62 parking spaces. The development site on the northern portion of the project area is occupied by a four-story building vacated by Eagle Electric in 2000, and accounts for 105,000 square feet of the site's floor area. The project area is currently located in Area B of the sub-district, as I mentioned, which allows for 8 FAR, or 337,104 to 4 square feet of floor area. After totaling the existing floor area from both existing buildings, there is approximately 26,500 square feet of floor area available for further development as of right. And this photo shows the development site. It's a view facing west from Queens Plaza South. And this photo shows a view of the elevated train line, which allows for the 7 train, and then in the background, there's the train line for the NW, and we're facing north from Queens Plaza South. This photo shows a view of the development site facing south from Queens Plaza South and 23rd Street, and the development site is outlined in the pink dashed line. And this photo shows a view of the development site facing north from the intersection of 42nd Road and 24th Street, so that the existing residential building is in the front, and then the development site is in the background, also outlined in the pink dashed line. A zoning map amendment is requested to map an M16R9 zoning district. And a zoning text amendment would create Area D within the Queens Plaza Subdistrict. Together, the zoning map and text amendments would create a district that has a maximum commercial and manufacturing FAR of 15, a community facility FAR of 10, and a residential FAR of 8. The base heights would be between 100 and 150 feet. And then ultimately establishing a 15 FAR at this site is in alignment with the goals of the Special Mixed-Use District by allowing a more even mix of residential and commercial uses on a site located on a very wide street adjacent to the Queensborough Plaza subway station. The proposed development would consist of a 22-story commercial enlargement of an existing four-story building with no changes proposed to the existing residential building. Out of approximately 320,000 square feet of proposed floor area, local retail would take up approximately 13,000 square feet, exhibit and community meeting space would take up approximately 7,500 square feet, and office would take up approximately 300,800 square feet. This would result in approximately 632,000 square feet of total floor area, or a 15 FAR for all of Block 425. The rooftop of the existing industrial building is proposed as a landscaped amenity space accessory to the office uses. It could potentially include an eating or drinking establishment with outdoor table service. The overall commercial building would rise to 26 stories or 410 feet with a 15-foot base height. On the ground floor, uses would include local retail, the office lobby, an Eagle Electric exhibit to display former building owners' products and history, and a loading area and an accessible accessory bicycle parking space. Entrances for the retail, exhibit, and office uses would be located along Queens Plaza South and 24th Street, and the loading dock would be accessed on 24th Street via an existing curb cut. The cellar would be occupied by local retail uses, an accessory gym, mechanical space, and a 2,400-square-foot community meeting space. The entrance to the community meeting space would be located along 23rd Street, which is at the ground level because the sidewalk that goes around this property, you can access the different levels depending on the different street. And so then, the retail that's also located in the cellar would be accessed via escalators from the Queens Plaza South entrance. The applicant is requesting a special permit for two types of bulk modifications applying to the street walls and minimum distance between buildings. The street wall modification would enable the facade of the fifth floor to be recessed on three sides to a depth of 40 feet, which would create visual distinction between the existing building and the proposed enlargement, as well as create space for the rooftop terrace below the 100-foot minimum base height. As I said, the recess would have a depth of 40 feet and a height of 24 feet. Above the recess, the base of the building would rise to a maximum height of 150 feet, which is consistent with the bulk regulations of the sub-district Area B. Additionally, the applicant is proposing a reduction to the distance between buildings from 80 feet to 60 feet, starting at the sixth floor, because this is where residential units in the existing building would be facing the proposed building. This reduction allows for commercial floor plates, for larger commercial floor plates, making the proposed development more feasible and attractive to commercial tenants. But still speaking to that minimum distance between buildings, I also just want to note that here you can see how the shape of the commercial building form preserves views and mitigates the impact of reducing the space between buildings, because that facade of the building actually steps away from the residential building on either side. And on this slide, I have the findings for the special permit for the Queens Plaza Subdistrict, and these all relate to, and this applicant is only requesting bulk modifications. So the bulk modification would need to aid in achieving the general purposes and intent of the special district. Would also need to enhance the distribution of bulk on the zoning lot. Such bulk modifications will permit adequate access of light and air to surrounding streets and properties, and bulk modifications would relate harmoniously to the character of the surrounding area. Pursuant to Local Law 78, a racial equity report is required because the applicant is proposing more than a 200,000-square-foot increase in commercial floor area. A racial equity report was conducted, was both required and conducted, and then submitted by the applicant. This is the first all-commercial project to produce a racial equity report, and since there is no new housing produced by these actions, this slide instead focuses on area demography. The graph on this slide shows the 2020 census data for the Sunnyside-Woodside Neighborhood Tabulation Area compared to Queens and New York City. This area is predominantly Asian at 39% of the population, followed by 28% Hispanic, 26% white, and 3% black shares of the population. In summary, the requested actions include a zoning map amendment to rezone an M15R9 district to an M16R9 district, a zoning text amendment to establish Area D of the Queens Plaza Subdistrict of the Special Long Island City Mixed-Use District, and a special permit to modify the distance between buildings and street wall location requirements. The proposed development includes a 22-story enlargement of an existing four-story commercial building that would result in approximately 320,000 square feet of commercial floor area. The addition of a commercial development and increase in density within the Queens Plaza Subdistrict is in alignment with the goals of the 2001 establishment of the Special Long Island City Mixed-Use District. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Teal. And before I go to Commissioners, let me just pose one question to you about the additional area that is being proposed here. So we've got the Special Long Island City Mixed-Use District, then we have the Queens Plaza Subdistrict, which right now has three parts. The concept here is to add a fourth part, so a section D of this sub-district. What is the value here, or what is the value of adding a new Site D as opposed to changing one of the existing sub-district rules?
Sure. So what makes Area D unique from Area B, which is what I've been compared to so far, since that's what the area is currently zoned or regulated as? Area D, the one thing that's really changing is the FAR, because right now, the FAR is only eight, and this allows it to go up to 15. But that 8 FAR still applies to residential uses, and so it's in the spirit of creating a more equal opportunity and share of residential and non-residential uses as it relates to the Special Long Island City District. But this site in particular is also special because it has the capacity to hold both, like the residential and commercial uses, but it's also located on a super-wide street, so it would have two towers, but they're on Queens Boulevard essentially, which is like 200 feet wide, and it's located in proximity to multiple subway stations. And so, the Area D enables this application to facilitate the proposed development without having to, like, conduct extensive environment review over all of Area B.
Are there other sites that, within the sub-district, that would meet those same criteria, super-wide street, can accommodate both residential, commercial, or is this one really unique?
This one is more unique. There are a limited number of lots left in the special district on Queens Plaza South specifically, but I'll also reference Alexis Wheeler if she wants to add anything.
Thank you, Teal. I think at this point, you know, Teal certainly illustrated appropriately the fact that we've seen so many of these sites that we expected to be commercial-go residential. We do have some sites to the north of Queens Plaza that I think we would certainly look to this framework and how successful it ultimately is in implementation and be able to devise whether or not it would be appropriate to map a similar zoning structure in the future.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Vajman.
Yeah, I was wondering, given some of the issues with commercial now, do we know or can we find out what the percentage occupancy is for the other commercial buildings within the Long Island City Special District?
I'm not sure if we have that data on hand. So again, Alexis, do you know?
So we don't have that data on hand, but that's certainly something that we can be looking into. To date, we do not have very many new commercial office buildings built in Long Island City. As Teal had stated, it's primarily through conversion. We do know that in the, with respect to kind of light industrial-type spaces, vacancy is very low. And in general, there has been interest expressed by the industry to grow commercial stock in this area, because again, as was stated by Chair Grotnick, there is a desire to kind of disaggregate commercial office space from some of the existing cores and concentrations and deliver space closer to where people live.
I'm just concerned that in this post-pandemic era, the amount of office space that we need and that will be utilized is perhaps dwindling, and so raising the FAR to a 15 in a market that may be dwindling, I just have some questions whether that is useful.
We'll certainly see what kind of data we can look to, and then we'll have the applicant speak to that at the public hearing as well with respect to conversations they've been having with brokers and other industry experts. One thing is that they have spoken to a number of firms that are interested in some of the smaller floor plates that this building delivers because they feel that it's actually well-suited to small design firms to be able to kind of have their own full floor, for example. But again, we'll have more information on that very soon.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carmody?
Thank you so much, Sharon. Thank you for the presentation. I just noticed in the package that the applicant said that the project will promote equitable access to opportunity by creating new jobs. Do we have any information on how many or type or who those jobs will be best suited for?
Sure. So so far, our job estimates are coming from the environmental review process, and so filling out the racial equity report was an interesting experience because they don't have tenants yet.
Right.
Which is one thing that the report was really asking for.
Yeah.
But per the EAS, the total number would be around 1,400 new workers, and this could be broken down into 73 workers within local retail and a community meeting and exhibit space. And then, this could also be broken down to 22 workers within the 7,300 square feet of restaurant space, and then the rest would be office workers.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I had a quick question to build on Commissioner Carmody's question. One is, in terms of, or given the changes in the distribution of the population in terms of race, kind of like the recent trends in decrease in Hispanics, but also specific changes in the median household income by race, I was wondering if you can highlight from the current discussions, any potential opportunities to address specific groups with the type of economic development that is being proposed? That's the first question. The second question, I was curious, I'm curious in some of the language referring to slightly higher numbers of pedestrian injuries, and I was wondering if you can talk a little bit about what are the anticipated impacts on local traffic?
Sure. So to start with your first question, we have encouraged this applicant, and they've been open to working with local groups in the area. And so, as I had mentioned, Queensbridge Houses is located very, very close to the area, and I can certainly let the applicant know that they should speak to this more, but the idea is that they can work through local groups to have workforce development opportunities. And then, for your second question, there were some traffic and pedestrian impacts, and so the applicant has produced some mitigation through our environmental review process to address those. Some of them were like signal changes at an intersection, such as where Jackson Avenue, Northern Boulevard, and Queens Boulevard all meet. There was some intersection timing changes that happened and a lane change. But otherwise, there was a pedestrian impact at the southern stair of the Queensborough Plaza Station. And so, the applicant worked very closely with DOT and NYCT to mitigate the stair impact so that there will be a sidewalk widening, because there's still some pinch- because there's still some pinch points on the sidewalk in this area because some buildings were set back because they were constructed new. Other buildings, though, that have been here for many, many years are not located, they don't have wide enough sidewalks between the stair and like the building. But I'm sorry, I'm getting really deep into specifics here. But that's kind of how this application happened. Is this area's really been evolving over the past twenty years. And so this would be another project that brings a little bit more space and pedestrian improvements and works with NYCT and DOT to make a new elevator that's going to be put in at Queensborough Plaza and a sidewalk widening. And then the outer roadway that's going to be pedestrianized on the Queensborough Bridge. All of those will come together in a way that makes sense so pedestrians can move through the area easier.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Teal, thank you for your presentation. I haven't seen anywhere, and maybe it's because of, I'm not understanding this, any mention of MIH being included in this building? And I'm wondering if at all MIH applies, and if it does not, why? And then the second question I have is, can you tell us about unit breakdown, size of apartments, and AMIs associated with that as well?
So this project did not have any increase in residential floor area within the rezoning component. Therefore, MIH, it cannot apply because you have to be a certain threshold for MIH to become this mandatory component. And so on that note, I don't have the residential unit breakdown of the existing tower. It's something I could ask the applicant to bring.
That would be helpful to understand, because there's always questions about AMIs. And in terms of the racial equity report, you know, I want to go back a second to something that was brought up by Commissioner Goodrich, and Commissioner Soria just touched on it. I know that the racial equity report just gathers information about what's going on in the community. But I'm wondering if we can use that as a tool to better enhance the services, the unit distribution. I know that there's a lottery, I know that there's a whole, you know, legal system, legal setup by New York State on how apartments are rented. So I can't say that I'm going to give ten apartments to a black community, five apartments to the Latino community. I understand that. But I'd like to better understand, what is it the racial equity report does for us other than give us information that we've conglomerated from facts and from data that we have?
Sure. I hear you, and I can certainly bring that back to our team and try to get you an answer.
Yeah, I don't expect an answer. I've been asked a different question. I've asked it a couple of times, but I think it's critical at this point that we get an answer. Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Teal, very much for your presentation. This item is certified. We're going to see it again down the line. So we'll certainly look to have some additional answers to some of the questions that were raised here, either by the applicant or by department staff. Let's move on to Fifty-Eight Nixon Court. Ryan?
Yes, so the second item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District thirteen, presenting for the first time to the City Planning Commissioner is Joelle Miller. And I'll also note that Commissioner Rom Pashad is recused on this item. Joelle?
Good afternoon, Chair Grodnik and Commissioners. Today I will be discussing a rezoning application for Fifty-Eight Nixon Court. This is a private application from SLG Assets Incorporated for a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment to facilitate the development of a new nine-story, approximately nineteen thousand square feet mixed-use building. The proposal includes construction of twenty-one dwelling units, including five MIH units, and approximately eighteen thousand five hundred square feet of residential space and eight hundred square feet of retail space. This project is located at Fifty-Eight Nixon Court in Graveson, Community District thirteen in Brooklyn. The applicant is pursuing a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an R-five district to a R-seven X and R-seven X C-two-four district within the Special Ocean Parkway District, and a zoning text amendment to amend Appendix F to designate the development site as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. This is a view of the surrounding area looking north. The project area is located along Ocean Parkway in between Murdock and Nixon Court. Ocean Parkway is a two hundred and ten square feet, excuse me, two hundred and ten-foot wide street and runs from south of Prospect Park to Coney Island. And the development site is located on the corner of Nixon Court and Shore Parkway. The F-line Neptune Avenue Station is located approximately half a mile from the development site. And multiple bus lanes, excuse me, bus line services serve the project area and travel to Kingsborough Community College, Bay Ridge, Sheepshead Bay, and Coney Island. The project area includes Block seven-two-three-seven, lots sixty-one, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five, and Block seven-two-three-eight, Lot one hundred and fifteen. Lots sixty-one, sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five comprise the development site. And Lot one hundred and fifteen contains a twelve-story tall apartment building that was built in the early nineteen sixties. East of the project area along Ocean Parkway is the Coney Island New York City Health and Hospital Complex. And parks in the surrounding area consist of two playgrounds, West Playground located west of the project area, and Grady Playground located south of Belt Parkway. The project area is outlined in black, and the proposed development site is outlined in blue. The surrounding area is encircled here in the purple dashed lines and includes mainly residential and community facility uses. The residential uses mainly consist of six-to-twelve-story multi-family apartment buildings. And the community facilities consist of the fourteen-story medical facilities that have parking spaces along Ocean Parkway. And there are two high schools within the surrounding, excuse me, within, near the project site. And this includes Lincoln High School and William and Grady CTE High School, just south of Shore Parkway. There's only one commercial use within the surrounding area. And the existing zoning districts within the surrounding area include R-four, R-four C-one-two, R-five, R-six, and the Special Ocean Parkway District, which have not been significantly changed since mapped in nineteen sixty-one. R-four zoning districts are non-contextual, low-density districts that allow all residential building types to be at a maximum FAR of point seven-five. The R-five district is a low-density general residence district that permits residential buildings up to one-point-two-five FAR and community facility buildings up to two FAR. There are a few C-one-two and C-two closure overlays mapped within the residential districts beyond the surrounding area to provide local retail uses up to one FAR. The Special Ocean Parkway District is a six-mile-long special district that covers over three hundred and fifty blocks and was adopted in nineteen seventy-seven with the intent to promote and strengthen the character of Ocean Parkway. The project area is currently mapped within a R-five district. As mentioned, the R-five zoning district is non-contextual, low-density district, and buildings may be up to a maximum FAR of one-point-two-five with a maximum street wall height of thirty feet and a maximum building height of forty feet. Above a height of thirty feet, a minimum setback of fifteen feet is required from the street wall of the building. The maximum height of the buildings within this district is forty feet with a maximum street wall height of thirty feet, as well as a fifteen-foot setback above the street wall. R-five districts require side yards of at least eight feet and a ten-foot yard, front yard. Parking is required for eighty-five percent of dwelling units, and off-street parking is required for eighty-five percent of dwelling units. Portions of the project area are within the one percent chance of flood risk, which requires buildings to comply with Appendix G of the Building Code for flood-resistant construction. And the remaining portions of the project are within the two percent chance of an annual flood. This is a view of the proposed development site. As you can see, the site is surrounded by residential buildings to the right. The site is currently vacant, and the parcel is triangular with approximately a hundred and thirty-three feet of frontage along Nixon Court and approximately a hundred and forty-four feet along Shore Parkway. And the parcels currently contain no curb cuts. Here you can see the remainder of the project area, which includes Block seven-two-three-eight, Lot one hundred and fifteen. There is currently a twelve-story residential apartment building that contains a hundred and ninety dwelling units with an approximate FAR of five. Okay, so this is a view across Ocean Parkway. And to the right side of the development site, we're looking at the Coney Island Hospital Facility. So the applicant is proposing a nine-story, approximately nineteen hundred square feet mixed-use building. And this will include eight hundred and eight square feet of commercial and retail space, eighteen thousand five hundred and seventy-seven square feet of residential space, and will include twenty-one dwelling units, and five of those units will be MIH. And this building will have a total FAR of five-point-five. The applicant is proposing eight parking spaces that would be accessed via a curb cut on Nixon Court, although no parking is required. The applicant intends to locate all mechanical systems above the designed flood elevation, dry flood-proof commercial spaces with removable barriers, and will only allow non-critical uses in the cellar space. The existing R-five zoning district, which permits less than two FAR, was mapped in nineteen sixty-one and is not reflective of the surrounding built form or adjacency to Ocean Parkway, a wide street. The applicant proposes to change the R-five district to R-seven X as well as map a C-two-four commercial overlay over only the development site. The R-seven X district is a residential district that allows residential uses at a maximum FAR of six with MIH. Community facility FAR of five and commercial FAR of two when mapped with a commercial overlay. It results in buildings around twelve to fourteen stories after a setback between sixty to a hundred and five feet. And parking is required for fifty percent of units or fifteen percent of income-restricted housing units. The applicant also proposes a zoning text amendment to amend Appendix F to map MIH options one and two, co-terminus with the project area, and proposes option one, which would require twenty-five percent of units to be permanently affordable at an average AMI of sixty percent. So according to Local Law seventy-eight of two thousand and twenty-one, effective June first, two thousand and twenty-two, this application requires a racial equity report on housing opportunity because it would increase the permitted residential floor area by at least fifty thousand square feet. The applicant states that the proposal will provide new income-restricted housing units in a location that has an area median income lower than Brooklyn and New York City at approximately thirty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty dollars. The proposed development will contain five studio apartments, one income-restricted and four market-rate, eleven one-bedroom apartments, two income-restricted and nine market-rate, and five two-bedroom apartments, two income-restricted and three market-rate. The income-restricted studio apartments will be offered at forty percent AMI. Both income-restricted one-bedroom apartments will be offered at sixty percent AMI. And one of the income-restricted two-bedroom apartments will be offered at forty percent AMI. And the others will be offered at eighty percent AMI. As per the report, the racial makeup of Graveson, Brighton Beach, and Coney Island is identified as being fifty-two percent white, seventeen percent Asian, sixteen percent Hispanic, and eleven percent black. From two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty, the area saw a modest five percent increase in population with increases in the Asian population and a small decrease in the white population. In summary, this is a private application by SLG Assets Incorporated for a zoning map amendment from an R-five district to an R-seven X district with a C-two-four commercial overlay within the Special Ocean Parkway District, and a zoning text amendment to designate the project area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. These actions would facilitate a new nine-story mixed-use development containing approximately nineteen thousand square feet of floor area, twenty-one dwelling units, again, of which five would be made permanently affordable. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Well, first of all, for a first presentation, bravo. Nicely done.
Thank you.
You are like a veteran up there, so thank you. I just have two questions, and my second will be at the risk of, you know, taking some of the thunder of Commissioner Soria. I know he's going to ask the question. But let me just understand on the FARs. You said that the building across the street is in a zone that's a five-FAR zone, right? It's an R-five district, and this R-seven X would be a six-FAR district. Is that correct?
Yes.
So the R-five has a maximum FAR of like one-point-two-five?
Okay, hold on.
It's a lower-density district.
Okay. The one across the street is lower-density than the one that's proposed?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. The district that it's currently in has one-point-two-five, but it's built, is it built to a five?
It's built to a five-FAR.
Okay, that is, okay, got it. So it's well overbuilt from what the zoning allows. So by doing this change to an R-seven X for both, it would bring the building across the way into compliance?
Make it legal.
And for this, and the R-seven X is a six, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Six-FAR for residential. Okay, great. Okay. And then the other question that I had was about the protections that are being afforded in this building to accommodate for the fact that it is at some risk for being in a flood zone.
Yeah, they do have some proposals to make it flood-resistant. I don't have the exact actions, but I definitely could have them for you for the next meeting. And I know that they did mention it to us, what they already proposed to do.
Commissioner Carmody, and then Commissioner Soria.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I don't have a question, I just want to recognize you all as my students at Wagner. So I just want to congratulate you again. Excellent student, excellent presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Soria, and then Commissioner Bozard.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. This is very clear. I wanted to ask, or build on the question about the vulnerability of the site to flooding. I mean, it's very clearly noted that we know this is going to be impacted. And I think the report lists, I think checks all the boxes in terms of the things that the applicant is required to do, both in terms of the flooding mitigation as related with, or as... In other words, I think that the report lists everything that the applicant is required to do. But given the magnitude of the vulnerability here, I think that this requires more than that. This is an area that, if we're going to increase residential density, we need infrastructure changes to absorb that amount of water. And so I'm wondering if, in exploring that question with the applicant, you can also inquire specifically about what are going to be the levels of permeability that are going to be proposed? To what extent green infrastructure could be part of that? All of these strategies that the Waterfront Relationalization Program suggests for areas that are exposed at this level within the coastal zone? The other question that I wanted to have, or maybe, yes, a question more like a comment, is building on the prior conversation that we just had about how to use the race equity reports, whether the applicant can discuss the relationship between the income bands that are being proposed within the MIH option with the actual differences in median household income per race? I think that in your presentation, you noted a couple of really interesting changes in terms of those trends, including reduction in white non-Hispanics, but also black and non-Hispanics are declining. And it would be interesting to understand, how can those options be specifically, or at least not leave anybody outside? Noting that we can't really be pitching housing to specific groups, that we really need to make sure that nobody is sort of like outside of what we should be proposing.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bozard? And Commissioner Bozard?
And I'll note, Commissioner Soria just gave us an excellent example of how we can use this information that's being provided in the equity reports to frame our questions and to better understand at a very nuanced level what's actually happening in a neighborhood. So I really appreciated the added information. My question is, I think, following up on, Chair, your first question, just in layperson's terms a little bit more, what could actually be built as of right here?
I believe they can only build, I'm going to pull up Corinza to help me, but I know it's not too high.
Do you remember the R-five?
Yeah, yeah.
We have a slide for that. I'm going to go back.
Yeah.
There we go. So essentially, it's any type of residential building, whether it's detached, semi-detached, or attached, or an apartment building as well. So it's pretty flexible. So, it's pretty flexible in terms of the building type, but the F A R would only allow for one-point-two-five.
Okay. So, some residential could be built there with no affordability requirements. I ask that to just say that, you know, this is one of those neighborhoods where there's no public sites, it seems, very few opportunities to build a hundred percent affordable projects, and mostly privately-owned land, where it is, I think, helpful to have tools, like M I H, even though six units is a drop in the bucket, but there's no silver bullet to our affordability crisis, that even though six units at below sixty percent A M I is an opportunity that wouldn't otherwise be there. And so, I just want to flag that, that I do think in neighborhoods like this, where very few housing has been built, that increase in F A R and the additional below sixty percent A M I units are actually quite valuable, even if it's just six, and appreciate that this is in one of those neighborhoods.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold.
I agree with that comment that Commissioner Bozard made. One just quick question, and looking at the maps, Ocean Parkway is a special district that has, you know, fairly loose zoning, obviously, on the residential side. I don't see anything on the map that comes close to the R-seven-X. I'd be curious if there's anything close. They're recognizing that, given the shape of, yeah, given that this is triangular, that it may need a special dispensation here, but just curious if there's anything, anywhere nearby that goes that far, the R-seven-X.
So, the building to the right, as we were kind of going over before, it actually is not an R-seven-X, it's an R-five, but it's legally not okay, like they overbuilt, and so even though the intent of the special Ocean Parkway district was to keep the character of the neighborhood, it's already not really, it's already going up, it's already kind of like out of R-seven-X designation, but it's just not zoned R-seven-X to the right.
Got it, got it, got it. So, there's some characteristics there that would be, you know, sort of similar, it's just not exactly.
Yeah, correct.
Makes good sense, thank you.
So, you wouldn't see it on the map, in other words, but there are existing site conditions which are consistent with this one.
Yes, with this development, yeah.
Right, okay. Commissioner Cirillo, and then Commissioner Duarte.
Thank you. So, not to belabor the focus on the neighboring building, but so, we have the project area, which is obviously this vacant area, and then the project area also includes this neighboring pre-existing building that is non-compliant. And the rezoning is incorporating both of those pieces, we won't get into like the block on lots, but it's incorporating, obviously, the development site, which we're seeing on the screen now.
Okay.
And the building next door. So, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how the building next door, which is not owned by the applicant, or is connected at all, and given the small site of the development site, what, out of the goodness of their hearts to bring a building that no one would know wasn't compliant into compliance, or is there, was there a recommendation to do that, to enhance the project area? Okay, okay.
I can, it looks like there's Brooklyn office folks here, but they can tell you that this is for city planning staff when we are evaluating these as they come in. We look at the surrounding context, when we see a building like this that is under, that is overbuilt, pre-existing, and I'll also say, in a district that doesn't permit it, we know that that's a problem. I don't want to, you know, sort of alarm anyone, but if this were to burn to the ground, they could not rebuild, right? And we would lose that housing. So, we think that it's important to include that, it enhances the land use rationale, it's good for that building.
Yes.
And it's good for the city, sort of long-term, to have that.
I appreciate that, and I'm all for compliance when we have the opportunity. I just, I, it was, it was a missing piece to the story about why the project area became what it was. I could have suspected, but at least now I know. Do we, would we have envisioned the development site, if it were on its own, problematic to rezone without this, without the project area being enlarged, although recognizing the incredible benefit of actually including it in this application?
Sure. So, when we're working with applicants to determine a zoning district boundary that's appropriate, it's a combination of things, right? The Ocean Parkway is a hundred-and-twenty-plus feet wide, it has the belt, the Shore Parkway just to the south, and it has the kind of the context of Tower in the Park, the hospital, and so, all of these things combined, you could say that's a well-considered approach towards how we would look at Ocean Parkway in this corridor. If it was just by itself, you know, it's a very small site, but as it sits within this kind of larger context and the length of Ocean Parkway, the R-seven-X to staff, it made a lot of sense, and could be placed in that larger, broader narrative.
Okay, appreciate that, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Duarte.
Thank you. So, going back to that building not in compliance, so it's a five-F A R, and what is the height on that building currently?
I believe it's a twelve-story building. It's a twelve-story building.
Twelve-story, so the minimum zoning change to bring it into compliance would be an R-seven-X. It wouldn't comply under an R-seven-D?
Yeah, that's correct. An R-seven-D allows up to a hundred-and-ten feet, this is taller than that, and a F A R of five-point-six. So, this would comply from the kind of the F A R perspective, but not from the bulk perspective.
Right, I mean, I'll note that the height is a little bit higher than I'd like, seeing that area. Okay, now, I'll touch on another question. There's a C-two-four overlay requested. I know there's no retail on Ocean Parkway as a rule, and I note that there would be no, there's no real front on Ocean Parkway because of the way it's trying to bow. But would we be setting a precedent for some kind of retail on Ocean Parkway? And if so, what kind of retail is envisioned, and would it be feasible under a lower designation than a C-two-four?
I think we'd have to talk to the applicant a little bit more about the exact users. Our understanding is that it's a locally-serving retail, you know, and as Joel noted, there are no commercial uses in this area, so I think bringing in some locally-serving retail would be benefit to the, you know, thousands of residents living in this area. And in terms of thinking about the precedent of bringing commercial uses to Ocean Parkway, you know, this area and this particular location that Alex noted, by Coney Island Hospital, by the Belt Parkway, on, at this intersection, it's different than Ocean Parkway a little further north, which is much lower in character, so we think that adding some ground-for-uses here, and especially in the flood zone, serves a number of different benefits.
So, if we can clarify the actual use that it would be, probably, I'd imagine a grocery store or something like that, but, and if that could fit under a lower designation, that would make more sense, I think, on that site?
Okay, and right now, there's just one deli that serves the entire area.
They've been grandfathered in, I'm sure, for how many years?
Oh, really, right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions, comments?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. This item is certified. We're going to move to a new borough. We're off to the Bronx. Ryan, what's next?
That's right, so the third item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning tax amendment in the Bronx Community District eleven. Also presenting for the first time to the commission is Toun Duling.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The project is twenty-five-sixty Boston Road rezoning, is on the agenda today for certification. The applicant, Boston Road Associates, seeks a zoning map amendment and a zoning tax amendment of a site located at twenty-five-sixty Boston Road, block forty-four-forty, lot sixteen-thirty and thirty-two in the Allerton neighborhood of Bronx Community District eleven. The zoning map amendment is to rezone the site from the existing R-six and C-eight-one zoning districts to a R-seven-two zoning district with a C-two-four commercial overlay. The zoning tax amendment to amend Appendix F of the zoning resolution is to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area, options one and two, co-terminals with the rezoning area. The proposed development is a new mixed-use, primarily residential building with up to three-hundred-and-thirty-three units of affordable housing, approximately nineteen-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-one square feet of commercial use, and that includes a fifteen-thousand-square-foot supermarket, six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet of community facility, and approximately a hundred-and-seventeen parking spaces. The applicant is the owner of lot sixteen, where the supermarket is currently located. The proposed development is intended to be built by a joint venture that includes the applicant and Slate Property Group. The area map here shows a larger local context surrounding the development site. The site measures approximately fifty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy square feet of lot area and has about two-hundred-and-eighty-six feet of frontage on Boston Road to the north, two-hundred-and-twenty-one feet of frontage on Barnes Avenue to the west, and three-hundred-and-twenty-six feet of frontage on Matthews Avenue to the east. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of one-story commercial and industrial buildings and residential buildings, generally ranging from two to six stories in height. Several community facility uses, such as a church and a school, are located to the south of the development site. Here is an aerial photograph of the rezoning area, highlighted in yellow, in the surrounding neighborhood, looking north. To the north, the development site fronts on Boston Road, a hundred-foot-wide street, also a commercial corridor, mainly lined with one-story commercial buildings in the vicinity of the development site. The block on which the development site is located is mainly comprised of residential buildings, ranging from two to five stories in height. The development site is located in the transit zone and well-served by public transportation. The Allerton Avenue Station, serviced by both the two and five subway lines, is located about point-three miles to the west of the development site. The site is also served by local bus route B-X twenty-six, as well as B-line routes sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-two, running between the Fordham Metro-North Train Station and the New Urshell Transit Center. So, here and on the next few slides are photos of the existing site conditions. The development site contains a one-story commercial building situated on the corner of Matthews Avenue and Boston Road, as you can see here. And as shown here, a two-story building containing a second-floor residential unit and a daycare center on the ground floor is located mid-block between the commercial building that I just described and the supermarket. And then the existing supermarket's entrance is located at the corner of Barnes Avenue and Boston Road, and the thirteen-thousand-eight-hundred-square-foot supermarket has an open parking lot with fifty-five spaces and is accessible via two curb cuts on Barnes Avenue. Here is an illustrative rendering of the proposed development at twenty-five-sixty Boston Road, looking in a south-westerly direction. The applicant intends to build a proposed development that includes a new ten-story building with three-hundred-and-thirty-two affordable housing units, plus one onsite superintendent unit. The applicant intends to finance the development through New York City Housing Development Corporation's Mix and Match Program that requires forty to sixty percent of the units to be affordable to households earning up to sixty percent of the area median income, with the remaining units affordable to households earning up to a hundred-and-thirty percent of A M I. The proposed development also includes a fifteen-thousand-square-foot supermarket, another four-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-one square feet of commercial use, and six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two square feet of community facility. The development includes a hundred-and-seventeen parking spaces, fifty spaces will be provided at grade, and the remaining sixty-seven spaces will be in the cellar. The building base height would rise to approximately seventy feet, or six stories, with an overall height of approximately a hundred-and-ten feet. The affordable units would include a mix of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units, and building amenities are accessible to all tenants, and include outdoor amenity spaces located at the sixth floor, indoor recreation rooms, and bicycle parking. Here you see the ground floor plan of the proposed development. The applicant intends to provide fifty parking spaces, accessory to the ground floor commercial uses at grade, and accessible from Barnes Avenue. The supermarket entrance is located at the corner of Matthews Avenue and Boston Road, where the proposed development will provide a landscaped open area. It's important to note that during construction, the applicant intends to temporarily relocate the existing supermarket on-site to twenty-seven-fifty Boston Road, that's located two blocks to northeast of the development site. An approximately twelve-thousand-square-foot commercial building is located on-site at twenty-seven-fifty Boston Road. That building is slightly smaller than the existing supermarket here at twenty-five-sixty Boston Road. Shown here is the proposed zoning map change. Currently, the development site is zoned R-six and C-eight-one. The C-eight-one zoning district is mapped at a depth of a hundred feet, measured from Boston Road, and the remainder of the development site and the block it is located on is mapped R-six. Proposes a zoning map amendment to rezone the site to a R-seven-two zoning district with a C-two-four commercial overlay. The proposed R-seven-two zoning district permits more bulk and a higher F A R than the existing R-six district. Furthermore, the proposed R-seven-two district would allow for residential uses, where they are currently not permitted under the existing C-eight-one zoning of a portion of the site. And in short, the C-eight-one zoning district provides for automotive and other heavy commercial services with a permitted commercial F A R of one. The proposed commercial overlay would permit retail and commercial uses on the ground floor across the development site. Pursuant to Local Law seventy-eight of two thousand and twenty-one, the applicant's required to complete a racial equity report on housing and opportunity because the proposed actions would allow for an increase in permitted residential floor area by at least fifty-thousand square feet. In the report, the applicant states that the proposed project would add new income-restricted housing units in Bronx Community District eleven that have seen little housing production in recent years, and in a location highly accessible to jobs, amenities, and services. This slide shows key demographic data of the local area, which is Pelham Parkway, Morris Park, and Laconia, the Bronx as a whole, and the city as a whole. On the left, this graph shows the share population by race and ethnicity for all three geographies, and on the right, the included graph shows the percent change of the population by race and ethnicity. And as you can see, Pelham Parkway, Morris Park, and Laconia has lacked in population growth, slightly behind the Bronx and the city as a whole. To conclude, the applicant, Boston Road Associates, seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone from the existing R-six and C-eight-one to a R-seven-two zoning district with a C-two-four overlay, and a zoning tax amendment to amend Appendix F of the zoning resolution to establish an M I H area, co-terminals with the rezoning area. The approval of these land use actions would allow for the intended redevelopment of the development site with a new mixed-use, primarily residential building along Boston Road with up to three-hundred-and-thirty-three affordable units, as intended by the applicant. Thank you for your time, and I'll take questions.
Great. Thank you, Toun, and as another first-timer, let me also say congratulations to you. That was very clear, terrific. We're going to go to Commissioner Benjamin for the first question.
The trucks to get into the loading area are either going to have to front in and back out, or they're going to have to back in and front out, which is a lot of movements on one fairly narrow street, and it's right in front of the entrance to the parking garage, which means that the cars that may want to get in or out will not be able to do that while those movements are going on. How is that, how does the applicant propose? How is that, how does the applicant propose to have that situation work? I understand that their problem is they don't have a lot of locations that are more than a hundred feet from the major intersection, but I don't see how they propose to make that work well.
All right, that's a good question. Um, I know that this came up during like a previous like design iteration of the, of the project. I would need to look back into the records to see how that was addressed and, um, why we landed on this, so.
I'd appreciate that. And then the second issue is the supermarket. That's a pretty small supermarket that most major supermarkets would not build one that small. Um, where we've been encouraging supermarkets to try and comply with the fresh regulations. I'm assuming the supermarket is not in a fresh zone and is not gonna comply with the fresh regulations?
The, this area is located in a fresh zone, but the, it's only for, uh, tax, um, incentives, not for zoning incentives.
Right. But will they be availing themselves of that, do you know, of that program?
I'm, I'm aware of the program. I, I would need to check back in with the applicant if they intend to use the, uh, the fiscal, uh, incentives. I'm not aware of them using that right now.
Is it possible for the supermarket to use below-grade space for sales purposes? There have been a number of markets that have enhanced their floor area able to offer better products by using below-grade space. Is that possible here?
Um, I would check back in with the applicant if that was possible for, for the supermarket they intend to build.
That might be important to get this community a better supermarket that would be able to service more of their needs, particularly if the loading, with the loading dock question, I suspect there's gonna be some issues with how the supermarket is gonna be serviced.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin, Commissioner Marine, and Commissioner Bozarg.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Rodneck. So, um, thank you for the presentation, Tim. Uh, I, I, I do believe that that's a valid question about the parking that Commissioner Benjamin had, excuse me, about the, about the trucks. Do we know what size trucks are gonna be used there? Because that street is extremely narrow, and with parking on both sides, getting a truck in there is going to be difficult.
I don't know the exact size.
That's okay. I only, I didn't expect you to answer that right now, so that's, so thank you. On, on the, on the issue of, um, the breakdown, unit breakdowns, I see that you have some units between zero and thirty. If, if you can break these out further into apartment size and AMIs, that would be very helpful. But I, then I, it, it begs the question, are there any other subsidies other than, or any other funding sources other than HDC? Because usually when you say zero thirty, you're looking at a supportive type, um, uh, environment with other subsidies. So I'm, I'm trying to understand and I see in, in, in the text. And I do have one other question, but I can't remember what it is right now, so why don't we take those right now?
Yeah, I, I've been in contact with the applicant about the proposed financing of the, of the development last week. Um, at, at this moment, um, they only seek to, uh, to get the, the Mix and Match program, like the funding through that. I'm not aware of any other sources.
So the zero thirty is not coming from any special program like, like the homeless or, or the Fed cap or any?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then my last question would be based on, on, on the, on the commercial applicants, 'cause I know you, you're saying the supermarket's coming back. And on the floor plan, you show a second commercial, but you don't mention if classical cleaning on the opposite corner is coming back. So I'm interested to know who, who that other commercial is for, because I happen to agree with Commissioner Benjamin as well. This is a huge community that is a food desert. And having a supermarket, I, I know the, this, this, this community intimately, I used to live here. It, it, it begs the question as to whether or not that supermarket is the right size and whether or not they should be looking at a lower floor. And then, of course, my last question, I'm sorry that I'm doing this, is this the parking? We're in a transit-rich neighborhood with an affordable product. Why are we providing parking? I understand that there's surface parking for the, for the commercial that's required, understood. I'm not debating that. But in terms of the residential, this is a transit-rich neighborhood. You can walk three blocks to get to the two and five trains. You can catch a bus that takes you to the two and five train. So I'm just curious as to understanding the parking need.
Yeah. Um, so for the intended tenants for the community facility and the retail other than the supermarket, at this moment, there is no intended tenant for those, uh, for those uses, uh, for that space. Only for the supermarket. No, sorry, the, the supermarket is, the current supermarket will be retained on-site. For the other, the four thousand six hundred and twenty-one square feet of commercial use, there is no, uh, intended tenant for that space right now, and the same for the community facility space that is proposed here. And then, um, as to your other question about the parking, um, from like the zoning resolution for income-restricted housing units, there is, uh, uh, zero parking required. Um, the fifty-five parking spaces provided at grade are meant to be used for the supermarket. Um, for the Mix, Mix and Match program, um, there is forty to sixty percent. The units are available, uh, to households earning up to eighty percent. Uh, from, uh, what I've heard is from environmental review for conservative analysis, um, it was assumed that the remaining units could be provided at market rate for which parking would be required, uh, per the zoning resolution. So that's why parking is, um, intended to be built in the cellar.
Is the parking then appropriate in ratio to what the zoning resolution is saying? Or are we providing more than what it is saying?
No, it's in line with, for that remaining percentage, it's in line with what the zoning resolution requires.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bozarg?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I was wondering if you could confirm, um, or if you know whether, uh, the term sheet for Mix and Match is, just confirm that it does not provide subsidy for those units that go up to one-thirty? I think that was, I, I don't know whether changes in four-twenty-one A have changed that policy, but I think, given how high those AMIs are, just wanna confirm that the developer's not actually receiving subsidy for that, even if it's gonna be regulated under the regulatory agreement. Um, do you know the answer to that?
Sorry, I'm not, could you maybe repeat the question?
Whether the, the higher AMI units are actually receiving public money for those units?
Uh, not, not that I'm aware of, but I would need to check.
We can check with HPD on that one.
Okay, I don't know if that's changed since the, um, and then whether you have heard anything from the development team about whether they're willing to consider going lower on those higher-tier AMI units. This does seem like a good opportunity if they're up for doing a hundred percent affordable or hundred percent, I'll say, regulated project, um, whether they'd be up for taking subsidy to go deeper on those higher AMI units.
We should, we should also talk to the, um, applicant, I think, about what the, um, actual market in this neighborhood is.
Yes.
Because my, my, and, and Commissioner Marine is, is nodding, I don't think it, there's the market for this in this neighborhood goes up.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm asking. I, I think one-thirty percent may be above, yeah. Yeah, I think maybe above the market.
Yeah, yeah.
And why it's important to call those maybe regulated units are gonna be under a regulatory agreement that over time they can't go above one-thirty AMI if the neighborhood gentrifies further. But that they're also not, shouldn't be receiving subsidy basically to be getting rents that are above what is currently the market rent.
And for the record, I happen to agree with Commissioner Bozarg. Thank you, Commissioner. I've got Commissioner Rampershead, and then I've got Commissioner Dweck.
Uh, thank you. Um, thanks for the presentation. Uh, I agree with a lot of the comments raised by Commissioner Benjamin and Marine and Bozarg. Um, I just have two quick questions. Um, with that triangle of space, has there been any other, I guess, scenario presented? To me, this looks like they just popped a tree right in the middle. Is there any other design intent for that space that's there? And also, was intended parking looked at for this? If they're gonna, you know, I don't, I don't see the need for the parking either, 'cause this is a the transit-rich area. I was just curious, was that also looked at?
Um, yeah, let me get first back to the, um, the open space, the sort of plaza-like space at the corner. Um, it was whether there was any other intent than what is shown here on the, uh, not that I'm aware of. It would be landscaped and it would be maintained, um, as shown here.
I was just curious, 'cause it, it, to me, it would scream for like, just throw all the shopping carts and it'll just be a mess. So I'm just curious if there was any thought, further thought into that space.
I, I can raise a concern with the, uh, with, with the applicant, uh, team. And then in terms of intended parking, I know this came up during a, a Community Board eleven Land Use Committee meeting, and my coworker, Michael, attended.
Yeah, uh, hi, Commissioners, good afternoon. I'll, I'll just say that on the twelfth of October, there was a sort of courtesy presentation, the Community Board eleven. This question very much came up, and what the applicant committed to for the board is, as the need arises, they would, uh, study the possibility of sort of managed parking on-site. This was a, a big focus of the community, particularly for the grocery store.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dweck, and then Commissioner Sorio.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to Commissioner Benjamin's, uh, point about the below-grade, um, use for, uh, supermarket. I'm aware, or I believe, that there is no bonus in the zoning for a below-grade space on a fresh market. But if you can clarify, i- if there is a bonus, if there is a IDA incentive available for below-grade, uh, on the fresh, that would be, uh, interesting to know, and maybe that's a way of enhancing the program, which would create a lot more, uh, space and food deserts without pumping up the zoning. Thank you.
Yes, I will, uh, check on it.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to build a little bit on the questions or the comments about parking and, uh, trees. You know, I, I was wondering if you can, uh, please encourage the applicant to share a little bit more in terms of what's the rationale for the green roof and solar on one end? There seems to be an interesting sort of like take on that, but there was no information on the package nor the presentation. So, so what's the proposal there? Also, with this vertical garden, uh, she seems interesting, uh, but, but, uh, it would be, we would, it would be important to understand what is, as a system, how are these interventions connecting to each other? There's also some, what seems to be some accessible green space on the sort of like eighth and the ninth floor around there. Um, but also, and then this is the final part of the comment, in the inner parking, the parking that is located inside the, with the courtyard, um, it would be really interesting to understand whether, or if it has to be parking, whether it could be permeable.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just a point of clarification. If they were to utilize the cellar for additional supermarket, it wouldn't count towards FAR, but it would count towards parking, correct? They would have to accommodate additional parking for that?
That, that is correct. Yeah, it, it wouldn't count as floor area, but they would have to provide parking if, as, as required, which, you know, may not, depending on the size, may not actually change, change much.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments before we move on? Okay, thank you all. Thank you, Toon. This item is third-certified, and we're gonna move on to our next item, which is Manhattan.
Certainly. The, the fourth item on our agenda is a non-Ulrich referral of a zoning tax amendment in Manhattan Community District Four. Our presenter is Andy Cantu. I will note Commissioner Sorillo is recused on this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Good to see you all in person, many for the very first time. Um, I will be presenting to sixty-eleventh Avenue, AKA the Otis Elevator Building, on your agenda for referral. Um, do we have a, there we go. Circle One LLC, uh, which is an affiliate of Ornato Realty Trust, uh, is requesting a zoning tax amendment to modify certain provisions of the Special West Chelsea District, uh, particularly those related to street wall height and the availability of the High Line Improvement FAR bonus. Um, the amendment would facilitate the enlargement of the historic Otis Elevator Building in, uh, uh, West Chelsea, Manhattan Community District Four. Um, just to orient everyone, this is the development site, which is located on the block bounded by Tenth and Eleventh Avenues, West Twenty-Sixth Street to the south and West Twenty-seventh Street to the north. Uh, the High Line bisects the block just to the east, the, east of the development site. Uh, the project area consists of, uh, three separate tax lots. Lot one, uh, which contains the approximately a hundred and forty-three thousand square foot Otis Elevator Building and extends along the entire Eleventh Avenue frontage. Uh, there's also a surface parking lot on that lot, uh, fronting on West Twenty-seventh Street. Uh, Lot Six, which is a nineteen-forties-era, uh, six-story former loft building, and Lot Ten, which is a one-and-a-half-story, uh, former warehouse building built in nineteen thirteen that's currently used as an event space. This is a view looking northeast from the corner of West Twenty-Sixth Street and Eleventh Avenue. And this is a view looking southwest from West Twenty-seventh Street towards the back of the Otis Elevator Building. Um, and you'll notice the parking lot in the foreground, which is sort of screened by that fence there. And I'll note that the Otis Elevator Building currently is occupied by the New York City Department of, uh, Human Resources, Human Resources Administration, sorry. And this is a view looking southwest, or just west, uh, from Twenty-Sixth Street. Um, the one-and-a-half-story brick building there with the pitched roof is the, uh, building on Lot Ten. Uh, just beyond that is the six-story, uh, former warehouse building, and just beyond that is the, uh, Otis Elevator Building. Land uses in the vicinity are highly varied and consist mainly of large lot, high-density commercial uses, shown in red, and multifamily and mixed commercial and residential buildings, shown in oranges and browns. West of Eleventh Avenue, there are a number of, uh, pretty significant public and utility uses in purple, including a ConEd facility, a Department of Sanitation garage, and a US Post Office. East of Tenth Avenue, the neighborhood starts to become, uh, much more residential in character. Zoning districts in the surrounding area include medium and high-density C-six commercial districts and low-to-moderate-density M-one manufacturing districts. The development site itself is split between a C-six-three commercial district, which allows a wide range of residential, commercial, and community facility uses as of right, and an M-one-five manufacturing district in which residential and community facility uses are mostly restricted. The site is located within the Special West Chelsea District, which I'll go into more detail in the next slides. Established in two thousand and five, the Special West Chelsea District can, uh, covers approximately seventeen blocks and was designed to permit new compatible residential and commercial development in West Chelsea, helps sustain the area's art gallery district, and facilitate the rehabilitation of the High Line Park as a public open space. The special district contains eleven subareas with special bulk rules for FAR height and building articulation. The rezoning also established three density bonus mechanisms, including the High Line Improvement Bonus, which allows property owners in certain subareas to obtain additional FAR by making a monetary contribution to the High Line Improvement Fund. The zoning for the site's a little complicated, so I want to just provide a little bit of context. Within one hundred feet of Eleventh Avenue, uh, shaded in red, the site is in a C-six-three underlying district within Sub Area C of the Special West Chelsea District. And the remainder, shaded in purple, is in an M-one-five underlying district outside any of the Special West Chelsea District subareas. The base FAR for Sub Area C is five, bonusable up to seven-point-five through participation in one or a combination of various density bonus programs. And the base FAR in the M-one-five area is five, and there are no density bonus programs available there. This created a little bit of a dilemma for split zoning lots like this development site that wanna take advantage of the FAR bonus. When the special district was created, the floor area and density bonus structure didn't account for situations like here where there are existing buildings that are overbuilt in portions of the C-six-three district and, uh, that are built to greater than five FAR in C-six-three, and other portions of the same zoning lot that are within the M-one-five district that are built to less than five FAR. So when both of these conditions are present, there's actually no way to apply the two-point-five FAR bonus to the portion of the site in the C-six-three district. And so any development in the M-one-five portion is therefore reduced by the amount of floor area above five FAR in the C-six-three portion. I know that's very complicated, but essentially this created, for split lots, this artificial FAR cap. And it created this sort of strong disincentive FAR cap, and it created this sort of strong disincentive for participating in the density bonus program, which is contrary to the purpose of the special district, which is to provide additional funding to, for the High Line. And so in 2009, the Commission approved a very narrowly tailored text amendment applying only to the site, allowing for split lots to overcome this limitation and participate in the High Line Improvement Bonus Program. So relevant to the requested action, which I'll describe in more detail in a little bit, the text stipulates that the bonus is only available to lots existing on or before June 23rd, 2005, which is the date the special district was adopted. Some background on the building itself. Originally housing the corporate headquarters of the famed elevator manufacturer, the Otis Elevator Building is a seven-story steel-framed Italian Renaissance Revival-style building, built in 1912, and designed by the noted architectural firm of Clinton and Russell. Important to your consideration today, it stands at 111 feet tall at the street wall. A significant portion of the surrounding area is located in the West Chelsea Historic District, which is outlined in red on the slide. According to the LPC, the buildings within the historic district reflect important trends in the development of industrial architecture in the United States and in New York City in particular. In 2019, the property owner obtained LPC approvals for the vertical enlargement of the main Otis Elevator Building. So in order for the expansion to not be visible from the street and thus detract from the historic integrity of the building itself, the LPC required that the building set back between 20 and 23 feet, excuse me, 20 and 22 feet from the parapet. So the development proposal, as approved by the LPC, is mostly as of right, except for two relatively minor issues, which I'll describe when we look at the proposed actions. The street wall height and the applicability of the density bonus program, which is currently not available to lots created after 2005. So in total, the project would contain about 283,000 square feet of commercial office and retail space. The two-story addition to the Otis Elevator Building would be set back again at least 20 feet from the base and rise to a maximum height, including allowances for mechanicals of 175 feet. And I'll just note that the maximum building height, in this case, is not changing at all, it's just the base height of the building. There would be approximately 64,000 square feet of additional retail and commercial space built on the parking lot portion, while the facade of the 1940s-era loft building would be preserved and restored, and the interior completely renovated. There would be no new redevelopment proposed for the warehouse building on Lot 10, and here in this rendering, you could see the new commercial space sort of cantilevering over the building on Lot 6. So as I mentioned, the development as proposed and approved by LPC does not comply with current street wall height regulations. The Special West Chelsea District requires that buildings along 11th Avenue be located at the street line and extend along the entire street frontage up to a height of 125 feet at a minimum. Of course, like I mentioned, the current height of the building is 111 feet. Therefore, the applicant's requesting an amendment to the Special West Chelsea District text, so that where a site meets two conditions, one, split between SubArea C and an M1-5 district, and two, located in an LPC Historic District, the minimum base height is the height of the existing building to be preserved, and no street wall is required above that height. And so because of these two limiting factors, only this site, this particular building, would be eligible for this relief. The second part of the text amendment is more of a technicality and concerns the availability of the 2.5 FAR bonus that I mentioned before, which currently only applies to zoning lots existing on or before June 23rd, 2005. At the time of adoption, the subject zoning lot only consisted of tax lots 1 and 6, but because the applicant will be merging with Lot 10, the new enlarged zoning lot wouldn't be eligible for this bonus, because it would have been created this year, which is obviously after 2005. So the proposed text amendment would allow qualifying zoning lots, regardless of formation date, the ability to obtain the additional 2.5 FAR, and the text as modified would continue to apply only to this particular site. In the future, the applicant will need to come back and apply for a chair certification to actually obtain that additional 2.5 FAR that they're proposing. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Al. And so, okay, so this is a complicated one. So let me just make sure that I understand the big picture here. So the West Chelsea District was established in 2005, an amendment was created in 2009 and adopted by this Commission to change the text in a way that allowed for, when you have a site which is in two different subareas, that you actually can take advantage of the bonus.
Correct.
Fast forward to modern day, another site was included into the mix, which otherwise would not be allowed to take advantage of this bonus, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, bringing Lot 10 into the zoning lot sort of threw it out of potential eligibility for the bonus.
Okay. And so the proposed text amendment here has a couple of components. One is, to very narrowly define, in an area where you have an LPC-approved building, you would say that the base height is the height that actually is the one that is being preserved by that historic building, and split lots are eligible for this bonus regardless of when the site was combined, is that right?
That's exactly right. And here's just, here's the text as it exists today, and the proposal is just literally crossing out the date.
Okay, got it. And the process for this text amendment is a, this is a non-U-LARP, so this is a text amendment referral to the Community Board and Borough Presidents and onto the Council, but it's not a, not a full U-LARP.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Benjamin.
Sorry, I seem to have too many questions, but in looking at the zoning map, it would appear that there are many properties that could be combined to be both within the M1-5 and the C6-3 for the future. So when you said that this is the only lot that would qualify under the new text, I need more as to why all of these other lots could not merge to qualify.
I'm sorry, would you mind?
Yeah, from 24th Street certainly on to 27th Street, there are a number of lots that are on the boundary between the M1-5 and the C6-3.
I think this map is actually a little bit misleading, the thick, dark line which represents the boundary of the zoning district. It actually sort of obscures a lot of the lot lines, so that, you know, when it looks like here that many of those lots are split lots, they actually aren't. Like the one directly to the south is not a split lot.
Okay.
And is that the High Line that's essentially on the, in the green?
Yeah, so to the, to the east, along that thick boundary of the...
Okay.
Did that answer your question? I'm sorry.
It answers my question in part, but it does seem like there is still potential for some anxious developer to combine lots that are currently not lots, are currently separate lots, so as to qualify under the new text when they couldn't qualify under the old text.
Right. So I think I understand your question. A lot of these lots, they qualify for the bonus already. What the 2009 text amendment attempted to do was to correct for this weird situation where there were overbuilt buildings within the C6-3 portion, and portions within the M1-5 district that were underbuilt. And so if you, you know, had that situation, every square foot above the maximum FAR in the C6-3 district, one would need to reduce the development in the M1-5 portion in order to comply. And so it sort of created this weird...
Is that because you can't transfer bulk across district lines, or just because of the way the Special Chelsea District is?
You would, you would be able to transfer bulk, but you wouldn't be able to, it wouldn't have made the density bonus attractive in that case. Is that...
I'm going to have to think about that a little bit. If I have more questions, can I talk to you later?
Of course, absolutely. And just to, just to follow up, and I don't know if this is the, this is the direction, but if future lots were to be combined, and they were half in the M1-5 and half in the C6-3, perhaps you have explained this by virtue of it needs to have had a Landmarks approval, and maybe it even needed to have existed as a split lot before 2005, but I don't know if that is the reason why one might not be able to take advantage of this text amendment. Could you take advantage of this text amendment that we're talking about today, if you were a future site that combines lots and want to cross over between M1-5 and C6-3?
Potentially, but, you know, when the analysis was done in 2009 to determine which lots would be, this, the text amendment would apply to, it was determined that I believe only two sites in the entire special district met those criteria, where there was an overbuilt portion in the building in the C6-3, and an underbuilt portion in the M1-5. So theoretically, yes, one could combine, you know, tax lots to create a zoning lot that's straddled, but it, it wouldn't necessarily represent the same disincentive to utilize that FAR bonus.
But didn't the 2009 text amendment allow for this density bonus to be taken advantage of in sites which were split lots before 2005? So it really only applied to those, maybe one or two sites that you're mentioning, right?
Right.
So, but is there anything that we're talking about doing here that would open up that question in a way that would enable sites that had not previously been split lots to actually take advantage of what we're talking about here?
Yeah, maybe it's easier to just talk about sort of, I think, what the spirit of your question is, is, you know, asking whether or not developers could get cute, and, you know, use...
So there's more of an incentive now that was not there before, intended before, or where the real estate wasn't worth enough to enable this effort to take place.
Right. The short answer is, is no. It's because it's the physical condition of the buildings on the lot itself that prevented the developer from, you know, being able to take advantage of the FAR bonus. So the, and just, I think, to sort of bring it back home, I don't see a situation in which, you know, a developer would, you know, after this passes, would think, aha, like, I've got them, like, let me go and combine these, you know, tax lots and create a split lot, and therefore I'll be able to get an additional FAR that I wouldn't normally be able to get.
Well, an additional FAR that I couldn't use because I had nowhere to put it before, but now with this, I can put it over here.
I think, let's, let's, let's do a little more, like, digging, and we can, can look at the lots and do some analysis and illustrate for the Commission our point, or, or not. And I will add, and Susan is in my line of sight, but I believe just keeping a limit, like, just changing the date would still be within scope for, for the Commission to do, if you're uncomfortable with this as it comes, comes through the process. So, so we can, we can do our, our work. We were just trying to make the zoning a little less specific in like, 2005 zoning lots, you know, like, we're just trying to, to make it a little easier, but, but we can, understanding that this is an issue, we'll do, do some homework, bring it back to the Commission, and discuss it at the pre-hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Other questions, comments? Okay, so we will, we will come back on this, but we're going to refer to the Community Board and the Borough President for 60 days. Andy, thank you very much, and we will move on to our next item, which is, well, our first of our pre-hearing reviews, so...
That's right. So the fifth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of the site selection and acquisition in Manhattan Community District 4, and Andy will present this as well.
Thanks, and I am back to present for a pre-hearing review, Block 675 EMS Station Number 7 relocation. And so, you know, it's been a while since the Commission's seen this, and so for the benefit of the new Commissioners, I think I'll just go into a little bit more detail than I normally would for pre-hearing items. So to summarize, the Fire Department and the Department of Citywide Administrative Services are requesting a combined site selection and site acquisition action to relocate EMS Station Number 7 from a temporary location underneath the High Line at 512 West 23rd Street and 10th Avenue, to a new state-of-the-art 18,000-square-foot facility at 613 West 29th Street in Manhattan Community District 4. The modern and larger EMS facility will help meet the FDNY station requirements and maintain and enhance the unit's overall operational capabilities. To orient everyone, this is a view looking east from the Hudson River. The development site is located at the border between West Chelsea and Hudson Yards, on the block bounded by West 29th and 30th Streets, the West Side Highway to the west and 11th Avenue to the east. The development site itself, there in, shaded in, in yellow, is a 12,500-square-foot vacant parcel of land located on the far western side of Lot 12. The balance of Lot 12 to the east contains the nearly completed 311 Residential Development So as some of you will remember, Block 675 was contemplated as part of the 2005 Hudson Yards rezoning as a potential shared Department of Sanitation Garage and NYPD tow pound. Since the rezoning, though, the public facility needs of the city shifted, and the city ended up not acquiring the sites. In 2013, Manhattan Community Board 4 and the Department of City Planning both undertook studies, which envisioned higher density and affordable housing on this block, as well as some form of public service use. In 2017, DCP released a planning framework which, excuse me, which included a vision for appropriate uses, density in urban design, established parameters to inform the review of future private land use applications, and supported the targeted expansion of the Special Hudson River Park District in order to generate additional funds for ongoing maintenance and operations of the park. In 2017, the U.S. Department of Transportation released its preferred alternative alignment for the Trans Hudson Gateway Tunnel Project, which identified the site as a construction staging area. In 2018, the city and the property owner, Douglasston Development, reached an agreement to locate an EMS facility on the site. Douglasston secured several approvals at that time, including a CPC special permit, which allowed for the exemption of up to 18,500 square feet of floor area for an EMS facility, as well as allowing 18 accessory off-street spaces, parking spaces. On your left is a street view of the existing temporary facility underneath the High Line, and on your right is a map showing the locations of the existing facility near the bottom of the screen, and the proposed location of the new facility near the top of the screen. As part of their recommendations... As part of their recommendations on the two thousand and eighteen applications, CB Four and the Borough President encouraged the city and the applicant to work together to relocate the existing station located in an unenclosed trailer to an enclosed space in the proposed Douglasston Development. In its consideration, the commission found that the special permit was appropriate and necessary to accommodate an essential municipal facility that would provide critical emergency medical services to these rapidly growing neighborhoods. This is a site plan showing the development site in the hatched pattern, uh, on the vacant parcel in the mid-block between, uh, within the context of the larger three eleven development. As proposed, the three-story EMS building would have a height of approximately forty three feet and contain a two-bay, uh, apparatus floor with enough space for nine emergency response vehicles, offices, classrooms, locker rooms, kitchen and dining spaces, and other support facilities. As part of construction on the new Trans Hudson Rail Tunnel, Amtrak will obtain a construction easement on the undeveloped portion of Lot Twelve until twenty thirty two. Construction of the proposed EMS station is therefore expected to begin after the easement is extinguished and be online in approximately twenty thirty four. Manhattan Community Board Four voted unanimously to approve the application with conditions. The community board expressed that they believe that the timeline for delivery of the station, twenty thirty four, represents an unacceptable delay, and thus their condition for approval is that the site not be used for tunnel construction staging and for construction on the station to proceed immediately. The Manhattan Borough President, in order to help expedite the public review process, formally elected to waive his official review period, but also sent, um, a supplemental letter echoing the community board's recommendation and conditions. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. So, uh, just for clarity, it's both the acquisition by the city and the site selection for this purpose. Once that happens, the city will engage with Amtrak for the easement to allow them to use the space for a dozen or so years for the purpose of tunnel construction, and then it will revert back or the easement will lapse, and then the city will build this station. Is that correct?
Correct.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you. So, uh, ultimately, the city would own, um, the parcel?
Yes. So the city needs these approvals, they will own and have site control of the parcel, but then essentially lease it back to Amtrak for the duration of construction.
Right.
Which is estimated to be ten years.
Okay. But thereafter, the city would own it in perpetuity?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
I just wanna echo the, um, community board's concerns around the timing of this, especially given that seems like the temporary site was leased, started when the needs were one thing, now the needs have expanded to having at least eight emergency vehicles. The new site that won't be ready for another ten years is only for eight emergency vehicles and not necessarily, um, anticipating future needs, given the growth in the communities that the EMS station serves. So it does seem, I don't know how serious they're taking, looking for an alternative site for the, um, construction staging, um, but it does seem like a very long time to wait for us to approve a project now and then wait ten years, not knowing if it's actually meeting the needs ten years from now.
Right. And FDNY and DCAST will be on hand on Wednesday to answer questions specifically focused on operations and capabilities and why this, they believe, does meet the needs into the future.
Yeah. But then on the staging, would that be in, I mean, I assume that's more of the mayor's office to negotiate with Amtrak, not, or is that DCAST doing that?
That's DCAST.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. I was wondering if, um, in addition to, uh, what Commissioner, Commissioner Bolzark just asked, you can also encourage the applicant to share a little more detail, or in this case, the city to share a little more, more detail about, um, what are the air quality provisions that have been committed, what's more or less, uh, what that will entail, as well as, uh, the street design, uh, sorry, tree, uh, tree planting design or plan that the community board is requesting? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, so this item, we'll go to a public hearing on Wednesday, so we'll be back here talking about this in a couple of days, so thank you. What's next, Ryan?
The sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District Four, and our presenter is Kathy Ko.
Good afternoon. Um, good afternoon. Uh, this is a private application in Corona in Queens Community District Four on the property located at ninety seven twenty seven Fifty Seventh Avenue. The applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to map a C two four commercial overlay on the entire property on underlying R six A, C one two, and R six B zoning districts to facilitate the expansion of an existing ground floor supermarket within an as-of-right new six-story building with residential uses. Um, and as, as a reminder, this application was certified on June sixth. The project area, which is outlined here in red, is in Corona, which is in north central Queens, and it's north of Lefrak City, which is a large residential complex, and is close to nearby regional malls that are located on Junction Boulevard and Queens Boulevard. The project area has good access to public transit with two stations, the Woodhaven Boulevard and the sixty-third Street Regal Park stations located about a half mile south and southwest, and there are also multiple bus lines in the area, and Flushing Meadows Corona Park is located about a mile east. And the project area is mapped with a, with an R six district in nineteen sixty one, and a C one two commercial overlay was mapped in nineteen sixty three, and the current R six A, R six B districts are mapped as part of the nineteen eighty nine East Elm Hurst rezoning. The surrounding area is characterized by residential, commercial, community facility, and manufacturing uses. The remainder of the block, as well as north and west of the project area, is mapped with R six, with an R, sorry, five B district, um, I'm sorry, R six B, and, um, is comprised of mostly two, two-story single detached residences and three-story attached, uh, residential buildings. Immediately south of the project area is mapped R six and is mapped as developed with the Lefrak City Residential Complex. Um, east of the project area is mapped with an R seven B district and is comprised of mostly seven-story residential buildings. And the area north of Fifty Fifth Avenue is mapped with an M one one district with, which consists of a con ed facility and light industrial uses such as auto-related and local contracting businesses, and commercial overlays are mapped along Fifty Fifth Avenue and Ninety Ninth Street, uh, which consists of local retail uses that serve the community. And here we have a closer view of the project area in context with its immediate surroundings. Um, development site is outlined in red and is developed with a single-story supermarket, which is owned by the applicant. Uh, immediately south is Lefrak City, which consists of twenty sixteen-story residential buildings that house roughly fifteen thousand residents in approximately forty-six hundred units, as well as community facility uses such as daycares and a branch of the Queens Public Library. On the southwest portion of the superblock, there's, uh, a twenty-story and six-story office buildings, which are primarily occupied by city, state, and federal agencies, and the stars here indicate supermarkets that are immediately close by. There's a food bazaar on the western side of the complex on Junction Boulevard and Great Wall, which is a Chinese supermarket on the eastern end on Ninety Ninth Street. And as we can see, each section of Lefrak City could be seen as their own micro neighborhoods because of its sheer density and superblock character, therefore justifying the need for numerous supermarkets in this area to meet, uh, residents' needs. There's also another supermarket, Aldi's, which is, um, located south of the Long Island Expressway, um, in Regal Center Mall. And as a reminder of the, uh, land use background for the site, the development site was mapped with an R six district in nineteen sixty one, and in nineteen sixty two, a BSA, the BSA granted a variance to permit the construction of a single-story supermarket, which was not permitted in the then R six district, um, for a term of twenty-five years. And in nineteen sixty three, a C one two commercial overlay was mapped, uh, but the variance was still needed for the northern portion of the supermarket, which is still and currently is mapped in the R six B district that does not allow for commercial uses. And the variance has been extended numerous times, and the current one expires in February twenty twenty seven. Here we have a view facing southwest from Fifty Seventh Avenue, um, showing the single-story local retail nature of, uh, the north side of Fifty Seventh Avenue, which is on the right, and Lefrak City, which is on the south side of the avenue, which is on the left here. And here we have a view from Ninety Eighth Street, looking southwest at the supermarket's current surface parking lot, um, and curb cut. The applicant proposes a new as-of-right six-story building at a height of seventy five feet. It would total approximately eighty-eight thousand four hundred square feet, um, including approximately twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial space on the ground floor, and about sixty-two thousand square feet of residential space on floors three through six, and there would be eighty-two new dwelling units with ninety-three parking spaces, of which forty-six commercial spaces would be located in the cellar, and forty-seven residential spaces would be located on the second floor. And I'll note that this increase, um, is, this is an increase of the initially proposed sixty-six total spaces at the time of certification, and this change was based on the community board's concerns about the need for more parking on the site. And to facilitate this development, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to map the entire project area with a C two four commercial overlay over the existing R six A and R six B zoning districts. And the transition from a C one two, um, to a C two four commercial overlay includes a reduction in parking requirements for food stores larger than two thousand square feet and a wider range of flexibility for commercial uses. C one districts permit use groups one through six, which include local commercial uses that are currently established along Fifty Seventh Avenue, such as pharmacies and beauty salons, uh, and the C two four commercial overlay would expand the use categories to include use groups one through eight and fourteen, which includes other uses such as, uh, bike, bicycle repair shops, rental and repair shops, local theaters, um, amusement and more. Uh, but the applicant intends to retain the existing supermarket within the, within the new development, and by mapping a commercial overlay over the entire project area, the applicant would also have the opportunity to terminate the BSA variance process. On September thirteenth, Queens Community Board Four held a public hearing on this application, and on the following day issued disapproval, um, with zero members in favor, twenty-three opposed, and two abstaining. In their recommendation, the board cited, uh, a few issues, um, including that despite the environmental analysis not having triggered traffic impacts, um, the board had concerns about possible increased traffic on congestion on Ninety Eighth Street, given that access to residential parking and the loading berth would be located on the street per the, per the proposal. Um, the applicant also had concerns around the height of the building, and since this development is not subject to MIH, the board's concerned about the lack of affordable units and the lack of tools available to include affordability. And on September twenty ninth, the Queens Borough President held a public hearing, and on October eleventh, recommended approval with the following conditions, that in addition to rehiring current employees of the supermarket, that the applicant commit to a minimum of a thirty percent goal to include MWBE businesses, local hiring, and to work with local organizations for outreach on new jobs. And this condition would also include quarterly reporting to the Borough President and city council member, um, and that in lieu of mandated, a mandated, mandated affordable housing plan, that the applicant reserve twenty-five percent of residential floor area to house those meeting sixty percent AMI as a sign of forthright community development, and that the applicant reach out to the Queens Public Library to discuss relocating the library from Lefrak City to this new development for an upgrade in services, and to meet sustainability goals by using previous materials on outdoor surface areas, to implement a composting plan and update the Borough President and city council member on these efforts, and to include bike racks and scooter storage in the supermarket, in the parking lot to accommodate alternative modes of transportation. The applicant also clarified the CB's concerns around the building's height, which is in fact pursuant to the level of seventy-five feet. Uh, the hundred feet that the board was concerned about is the portion that includes the bulkhead. The applicant team also discussed some of the community board's traffic concerns, explaining that traffic would not, would not be exacerbated along Ninety Eighth Street because, um, residential parking access would be located in the same place as the existing supermarket parking access, and residential trips are less frequent than existing supermarket trips. And the proposed loading berths, uh, would also take truck loading off the street, thereby reducing congestion. And in addition, current congestion along Fifty Seventh Avenue, um, is in part due to the location of the existing curb cut, which is adjacent to the bus stop, which would also be removed as part of this application. Um, and here we have a view of the proposed development, um, looking northeast, and here we have one looking southeast. Um, and in summary, this is an application for a zoning map amendment to map a C two four commercial overlay across the property located at ninety seven twenty seven Fifty Seventh Avenue, and this action would facilitate the redevelopment, expansion, and modernization of an existing supermarket that's been serving the local community for decades. And that concludes my presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. Let, let me just, for a point of clarification here, um, so currently, the site is R six A and R six B, and the, um, supermarket is not allowed for the portion that is in R six B? Is that correct?
Uh, well, it's an R six A with a C one two overlay and R six B, so the supermarket's not allowed in the portion that does not have the overlay.
I see. So the R six B doesn't have any overlay at all?
Right.
Okay. So this is adding the overlay and making it not a C one two, but a C two four?
Yep.
And it's putting it over, across both?
Exactly.
Okay. Got it. And that would obviate the need for continued special permits like the one, or variances which are, uh, expiring in twenty twenty seven right now, right?
That's right.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? Mr. Benjamin?
Could you go back to the slide with the site plan?
Um, I don't think one included a site plan. We have a rendering here.
Once again, just the, where are the curb cuts?
Uh, the curb cuts are intended to be on Ninety Eighth Street, as well as one on Ninety Seventh Street, the one on Ninety Seventh, sorry, Ninety Seventh Place, which was on, on the other side of this development, on the east side, um, and that would be to access the cellar supermarket spaces.
And the loading dock?
No, the loading dock would be on Ninety Eighth Street, on, on this portion. Um, it may be a little hard to see, but there's a little bit of a, this rendering isn't quite showing the curb cuts very well. I can ask the applicant to have more updated renderings, um, when they come here for, uh, the hearing on Wednesday, and better explain that.
That would be helpful, because I'm sure you heard my other questions. I'm always concerned with supermarkets about how they're going to get goods in and out, and how that's not going to conflict with existing traffic.
Yeah. Um, and their intention is to have their loading berth within the development so that the truck enters and unloads from within.
But how do they get out? Unless they have a through parking, they either have to back out or back in.
Right.
And that's just a conflict in and of itself.
Sure. My understanding is that they, this would be the single loading berth access, um, but I can have the applicant clarify on the circulation.
Yeah, they could be prepared to talk more about the parking and how the parking and the unloading will work. Are they going to have different times, or? That would be helpful.
Okay.
Other questions, comments?
Thank you, Chair. I was, uh, thank you for your presentation, and, and also wondering if, uh, the applicant can discuss a little bit, um, along, uh, the lines of what the community board, um, has, is requesting, um, what are some of the provisions to address permeability and both, um, absorb water but also protect against heat? I'm wondering if, uh, there could be additional details in that regard?
Sure. Okay.
Right. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you very much. Um, we are gonna see this one again on Wednesday, and please relay to the applicant, uh, some of those follow-up items. We appreciate your presentation.
Will do.
Okay. Uh, next up is, uh, fifty-eight oh two Northern Boulevard rezoning, Ryan?
That's right. It's the seventh item on our agenda. It's a pre-hearing review of a zoning map, zoning text amendment in Queens Community District Two, and Teal Daley will present. Commissioner Ramfuschott is recused on this item.
All right, this is a presentation, uh, for pre-hearing of a rezoning located at fifty-eight oh two Northern Boulevard. The project area is located- The project area is located in the northeast corner of Community District Two in the Woodside neighborhood of Queens. The applicant is a private applicant named 5802 Northern Boulevard LLC. The applicant is requesting two actions. One is a zoning map amendment to change an R5 district to an RC, R6B district with a C22 overlay. And the second action is a zoning text amendment to map a mandatory inclusionary housing area. These actions would facilitate the development of a new two-story, 8,000-square-foot boutique automobile sales showroom. The project area is indicated by the dotted black line on the area map, and this rezoning area is bound by Northern Boulevard to the north, 60th Street to the east, a line 100 feet south of Northern Boulevard to the south, and 58th Street to the west. Frontage on, or this project has frontage on Northern Boulevard, which is a major commercial corridor and 100-foot wide street. Northern Boulevard is characterized by the many auto dealerships and repair shops that line either of its side through link, through its length of Western Queens. This part of the corridor is predominantly characterized by one-story warehouses, auto repair shops, and parking within the M11 zoning districts that are mapped along transportation infrastructure in the area. In particular, these M11 zoning districts, as shown in purple, are mapped along the Amtrak rail line to the west and the Brooklyn Queens Expressway to the east. The mid-blocks to the north and south of the project area are largely characterized by two-story attached residential buildings in an R5 district, as indicated by the yellow on the map. The project area is located in the transit zone with the M and R trains accessible via the Northern Boulevard Station, which is located approximately a quarter mile to the west. The LARR, the Long Island Railroad, and the Seven Train are accessible via the Woodside Station and the 61st Street Woodside Station respectively, and both of these stations are located on top of each other approximately three-quarters of a mile to the south of the project area. Additionally, the Q66 bus serves Long Island City and Flushing and is accessible via Northern The rezoning area consists of three tax lots, as outlined by the black dotted line on the map. Within the rezoning area, the proposed development site is an irregularly shaped lot depicted in the red dashed line, and it's located on the block end and is approximately 5,300 square feet in area. It has been improved with a one-story commercial building that was built in 1930 with parking in the rear. The building was most recently used as a non-conforming eating and drinking establishment, and this use was discontinued about six years ago. The other lots include a two-story residential building and a two-story mixed residential and commercial building with a car wash on the ground floor. The photo on this slide shows a view of a development site facing south from Northern And this photo shows a view of Northern Boulevard facing west from 60th Street, so that the development site is to the left. You can also see the auto dealerships in the background, including Honda and Ford. Under the proposed actions, an R5 district would be rezoned to an R6B with a C22 commercial overlay. The existing R5 district results in a wide variety of low-scale housing types, from detached single-family homes to small apartment buildings. The R6B zoning district results in the traditional rowhouse. It has a height limit of 55 feet with inclusionary housing, and new buildings must line up with their neighbors at the street. Although the zoning map amendment would allow for a residential building, this applicant is proposing solely commercial uses. This approach allows for the site to be redeveloped in the future with the commercial and/or residential uses, and this would be at a modest increase of density from what's there today, with the, also with a required affordable housing component through MIH. And also, this location is on a wide street and an exit, an area accessible via transit. However, for this proposed development, the applicant would utilize the C22 overlay for the auto showroom. C22 districts permit retail and commercial uses on the ground, sorry, on the lower floors of a development up to a two FAR in residential districts designated R6B or higher in density. Although this C22 overlay could have been mapped in an R5 district, this would not have facilitated the proposed development because only a one FAR would have been allowed.
Bless you.
The applicant is also proposing to map MIH options one and two co-terminous with the rezoning area. The proposed development would include 8,000 square feet of commercial uses located in a new building that would be 25 feet in height with an FAR of 1.52. Approximately 4,500 square feet would be used for auto sales on the ground floor, and approximately 3,600 square feet would be used for accessory office space on a mezzanine. The showroom is designed to serve customers that have already decided on the model of car they plan to purchase through the automobile manufacturer's website. In-person visits would allow customers to select custom configuration options, which, with the assistance of showroom employees and kiosks. Purchased automobiles would then be delivered from an off-site location to the customer's home or office. A vehicle elevator would be installed inside the building to move cars between the cellar and the ground floor showroom, and 12 cars could be stored in the cellar. Four attended parking spaces would be located to the south of the building, and there are existing curb cuts located on 58th Street and 60th Street to facilitate vehicle circulation between the street and the site. And in terms of public review, this application has been reviewed by Community Board Two. They ultimately voted to oppose the application, with 17 board members voting against the application, 15 were in favor, and one abstained from voting. And the reason for voting against the application was that they ultimately felt that they were opposed to further development of auto-related uses on Northern Boulevard. The Borough President also reviewed this application and voted in favor of it with conditions. These conditions including hiring minority and women-owned businesses, as well as local residents, also the use of porous concrete in the parking area, and passive natural landscaping for better drainage and street beautification. And also working with, asking the applicant to work with Community Board Two to partner with environmental groups to offset the sale of carbon-emitting vehicles. And they also, the Borough President also asked the applicant to work with Community Board Two to identify locations to install bike racks throughout anywhere in Community District Two. And the last condition is to prioritize the sale of electric or hybrid vehicles. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Teal. Before I go to any questions, I just would like to amplify the Borough President's recommendation for the porous materials, if possible, and also for the green space to both absorb rain and also to beautify the area. I think that actually would be very appropriate and useful, particularly here in an area that has a lot of the car dealerships, so. Okay. Other questions, comments? Commissioner Soria?
Thank you, Chair. What's been the response to the community board's sort of emphasis, and the Board President's kind of emphasis on the environmental, in, giving the green infrastructure suggestions, but also specifically on the charging stations? And it sounds like the applicant has increased the number of charging stations, but can you explain a little bit, what's the plan with that?
Is your question specifically what the applicant is responding to these requests?
Yes.
The applicant has been very open to these requests. They are planning on installing multiple electric vehicle charging stations. I believe most of the spots outside, maybe all four of them, would be electric and could be accessed by anyone on the street. And they are also open to, like, what they said so far is that they're working with engineers to understand how to develop the property to the most, to like, its best, because there is currently a cellar on-site, and they want to change the cellar up a bit, and so they're working with an engineer to understand like, the land itself and what they can do in terms of the porous concrete, in terms of what, how the cellar can function. And then they're open to the street beautification.
Thank you. That's, that's really useful, and I look forward to hearing more about the potential, I mean, in terms of the green infrastructure, hearing a little more detail in terms of what would that look like. But specifically on the charging stations, I think that this is, and given what you said about the existing number of businesses associated with auto-related, it would be interesting to understand whether or not these charging stations can actually spur economic development. In other words, who's going to manage them? Can there be worker-owned cooperatives that can actually, you know, own this infrastructure or co-own it, or at least lease it, to be able to charge or, or take advantage of the, the potential services that they're gonna provide? Whether that's the plan, or whether it's gonna be something that is confined within sort of like the showroom and specific to that particular niche?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll definitely pass these comments on to the applicant so they can speak on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you very much, Teal, again. We're gonna see this one on Wednesday for the public hearing, so we will move on to our next item. Ryan?
Yep. The next item, our eighth item on our agenda, is a post-referral review of a non-Eulerp renewal of a previously approved special permit in Queens Community District Two. Teal will present these as well.
Big day for Teal. Welcome back, Teal. All right.
If you haven't noticed, I only come when I have three projects. That's the real name. All right. So this is a private application for a project located in the Long Island City neighborhood of Community District Two of Queens. So we're, we're actually stepping back into Long Island City, similar to the project I presented on first this morning. The proposed development would include two mixed-use residential and commercial buildings, including a 27-story building with approximately 134,000 square feet of floor area, and a 49-story building with approximately 376,000 square feet of floor area. As I described earlier, the Long Island City core contains a mix of residential, commercial, and industrial uses, and a range of building types from two-to-four-story high-lock coverage buildings to towers all the way up to 67 stories in height. The project area is located on Jackson Avenue, which is 100-foot wide street and commercial corridor that cuts through the Long Island City core from southwest to northeast. The project area is located within an M15, R9 zoning district in the Queens Plaza sub-district of the Long Island City mixed-use district. The surrounding area has excellent access to seven trains via three different subway stations. And this project is associated with a, with previous disposition actions of city property that I'll discuss on the next slide, but on this slide, I want to call out the transportation infrastructure that's shown in the dark maroon color on the map. So this dark maroon color indicates elevated transportation infrastructure that cuts through city blocks at an angle from northwest to southeast. The elevated structures are located to the north of the development sites, and the development sites are outlined in the black dotted lines. And this infrastructure specifically are vehicle approach ramps that facilitate vehicle access to the Queens Borough Bridge and Queens Boulevard. And so for, to start out, I just wanna call out some of these lots that we're talking about today. Previously, or there are vacant and underutilized city-owned lots that are located underneath these elevated roadways. These undeveloped lots are not mapped as streets and are therefore able to generate floor area. And then the elevated roadways above that sit on top of these lots are considered streets for the purposes of bulk provisions in zoning. The floor area generated by these lots could be disposed to the adjacent lots to increase overall development rights to advance citywide affordable housing goals, which I'll explain through this presentation. And so the specific actions requested in 2018 include two dispositions of city-owned property, so that approximately 66,000 square feet of development rights were transferred to the 2701 Jackson Avenue site, and approximately 296,000 square feet of development rights were transferred to the address at 2632 Jackson Avenue. Today, though, we'll really be focusing on the zoning special permit, which is the modification of bulk requirements, because that's the subject of the renewal specifically. Another action that had been requested in 2018 was a special permit for a public parking garage, but this is no longer being pursued, and so we're not, we're not asking for a renewal for this. So this photo shows the development site at 2701 Jackson Avenue. The development site is currently under construction for the proposed development and was formerly occupied by an automobile service station that was demolished in 2015. The development site is 9,195 square feet in area, and the yellow color in the background shows the location of the Queens Borough Bridge approach ramps. And this photo shows the development site at 2632 Jackson Avenue. The development site contained a one-story, approximately 15-foot-tall vacant building that was formerly a warehouse. This site has, or this building has since been demolished. And then the site itself is 10,000 square feet in area, and again, the Queens Borough Bridge approach ramps are shown in the background in the yellow color. And so stepping into the proposed development, at 2701 Jackson Avenue, a new 26-story mixed residential and commercial building would be constructed with approximately 140,000 square feet of area, or 5.6 FAR. Approximately 130,000 square feet of floor area would be for residential uses. Approximately 10,000 square feet of retail space would be located on the first and second floors, and then mechanical space would be located on the third and fourth floors. And again, as I had mentioned, the public parking garage is no longer a part of the project, and so some of these graphics are a little bit older, just to show you what had been proposed. But the project itself has not substantially changed because the, the bulk in relation to these special permits, it remains the same since 2018. The base of the building would rise to the maximum base height of 150 feet before setting back 10 feet from Jackson Avenue, which is in compliance with the street wall requirements of the Queens Plaza sub-district for this street frontage. And I'll also note that there is an affordable residential development component of this application, which was modeled after the levels and standards of MIH, even though MIH was not mapped within any of the actions for this project. This means that 30% of the residential floor area will be provided through permanently affordable units at an average of 115% of the area median income. So that out of approximately 120 units that would be developed, 40 of them would be permanently affordable, and this is baked within the restrictive declaration rather than MIH. The proposed development at 2632 Jackson Avenue would be a new 49-story mixed residential and commercial building, and it would be constructed with approximately 376,000 square feet of floor area, or 6.2 FAR. Approximately 361,600 square feet of residential, of floor area would be for residential uses, and approximately 14,700 square feet would be used for retail space on the first and second floors, and mechanical space would be located on the third and fourth floors. The base of the building would rise to the maximum base height of 100 feet before setting back 10 and a half feet from Jackson Avenue. And parking would not be provided in this building either, and it hadn't been previously proposed. 30% of the residential floor area would also be provided in this building for permanently affordable units at an average of 115% of the area median income, so that out of approximately 361 units total, 112 would be affordable. So the requested actions for this applicant is a renewal of special permits for bulk modifications for both properties pursuant to zoning resolution section 1143. And these special, these bulk modifications include modifying setback requirements of the building frontage facing the ramps or the elevated transportation infrastructure, as well as modifying street wall requirements of the building frontage around Jackson Avenue and the, and the elevated transportation infrastructure. So just before I step into some of our sections, I'll show a photo of, of the area. So this photo is looking east from underneath the elevated ramps, and like, right now, what we're looking at is actually the city-owned lot itself with the 2632 development site just to the right of the photo. And one thing I wanted to call out is this blue and gray fence with a lot of different colors. This is part of a DOT pilot project to improve perimeter treatment around storage spaces underneath transportation infrastructure such as this. And there are efforts for further improvements to the area under the ramps, which is within a public engagement process at this time. Okay. So stepping into the sections and the modifications themselves, within these sections on the left and the middle, there is this like reddish color with the dashed line around it, so this is DOT's like no-build zone, which means that the buildings themselves do need to be set back from the elevated roadway. And that's what one of the, the modifications is for, because with And that's what one of the, the modifications is for, because within the Queens Plaza sub-district, buildings are required to be built up to the street line and up to their neighbors. But in this case, um, that particular regulation doesn't really make sense, because DOT also needs to be able to access their spaces, the city-owned lots that are located underneath the elevated roadways. And so, each building at twenty-seven oh-one and twenty-six thirty-two would be set back a little bit from, um, the elevated roadway. And then the other special permit, the other modification, is for the required setback at one hundred fifty feet. And so, in the, the hatched line on the back of either building near the roadway, the applicant would not be setting back the building. It would just rise straight up, um, along the frontage, along the elevated roadway. And this is because, like, even though the elevated roadway is, is treated like a street in a zoning resolution, it, it doesn't actually function as a street that pedestrians walk down where light and air is needed to be accessed all the way down to the street. And so, um, this enables the, the setback is less necessary in this situation. And then just to the, the far right is the site plan, which is also just calling out the distance between the buildings and the elevated ramps and showing that, the need for that setback, so that DOT can access the city-owned lots. And this slide shows the findings for the special permit renewal. And what the commission needs to find is that the project has not substantially changed, nor has the area around the project. And in this case, as I said, the project has not changed, especially in the form of the bulk. It's just the use of the public parking garage is no longer being pursued. And the area around this special project is in flux, because it's Long Island City, but it, everything is happening according to the, the goals laid out within the special Long Island City mixed-use district. And this project, uh, did have, uh, was, had a public hearing with Community Board Two. Community Board Two voted to approve the project with conditions, twenty-eight in favor, with seven opposed, and one abstention. Conditions include a request for the applicant to participate in quarterly meetings with the board on design and construction of the project. And, and the community board also requested twenty thousand square feet of community facility space at the ground level in lieu of the public parking garage. And this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Teal. Uh, just, um, one follow-up on the special permit option, um, and the facts and circumstances on which it was initially granted. So, we're looking at the, the development site itself, not the surrounding, uh, neighborhood. What are the facts? I guess this is the question. What are the facts that are not supposed to have substantially changed for us to determine that we can just renew the special permit here?
Um, I mean, the idea is just that there haven't been any huge changes in the neighborhood or in the project itself that would make the original special permits, like, not applicable anymore. In this case, the, the applicant, they're still asking for the same modifications of building setback, uh, or no building setback. Well, it's both, to not have the building setback along the ramps above a hundred fifty feet, um, but also to have the building setback from the ramps at the street level. And so, these, in that sense, the project has not, what they're asking for in terms of the modification has not substantially changed, nor has the bulk of the building changed at all. And so, in that case, we can say that, uh, proposed development has not substantially changed. And then, in terms of, um, the neighborhood, it also has not substantially changed in character. The, the, the uses are continued to be mixed uses. There's still a broad range of building types that are growing and transforming over time as a special Long Island City, special district gets built out. Um, does that answer your question?
It does. And this would be a renewal for how long?
Um, this would be another, I think, three-year?
Three.
Three-year renewal?
Confirmed, three years. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Gold.
Thanks. Can you give some context as to what happened? Twenty eighteen, it sounds like there was an RFP, and this was the successful winner. Presumably, they haven't done anything since. Did they pay for these rights? Um, have they been paying for the rights? How does that process work?
So, this applicant actually has started construction. And so, I, I'll start with where I think your question started. They, they've already demolished both buildings on either side of Jackson Avenue. And what this renewal is for is just so that they have a little bit more time to continue construction. They have been, we've all been struggling through, um, a pandemic. And, um, in this particular case, like, they've already broken ground on both sides, and they just need a little bit more time. Does that answer your initial question, or am I?
Sort of. I, I guess, I'm just trying to get a sense for, was this something, one of the things that I think you worry about is, or I do anyway, is if, uh, someone gets these rights and they sit on them. And so, it sounds like they've been doing something, but maybe a bit slower than expected. Um, if there was some monetary transfer for the rights, then I understand why they, why, um, yeah, this, this is fair. But if there wasn't, and the goal here is to create, you know, additional, um, housing, if you will, and they're sort of sleeping on it, um, you know, it sort of puts my antennas up a little bit. So, I was just trying to get a sense for, you know, the process. Is this something that they paid for, or it's just something that they were the winner, the winning bidder, and?
Sure. Um, I mean, in terms of, yeah, go ahead. Thank you for the question, Commissioner Gold. Um, in this case, this was actually initially established as a limited RFP by EDC. And the only eligible respondents are, uh, lot owners that are directly adjacent to these lots in order to receive these development rights. Um, because this is city-owned land, there was an opportunity to leverage that into something that would kind of serve the, the neighborhood and the city. And in this case, it was really to strive for affordable housing on sites that actually only had market rate entitlement and no affordable requirements. And so, there was a monetary component, but typically that is discounted because the site is being leveraged to realize affordable housing. And so, the goal was to actually synthesize something that was more akin to, um, MIH in the development deal. And so, there was a transaction, but not the same as, like, what a market rate transaction would have elicited.
Got it. Got it. And, and it sounds like we're satisfied that they're advancing the cause, if you will. I mean, the pandemic slowed them down, but they're actually doing work. It's not a stalled.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, in particular, the twenty-seven oh-one site, because of the former uses there, um, environmental remediation takes a bit longer as well, just to clean up all of that site, because there were gas tanks underground and, and some of those components. But we do feel confident about these respondents and, and the work that they're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Marine, Commissioner Benjamin, Commissioner Osorio.
So, just two questions. I just wanna peel that question back a bit. So, the, the question was, was there a mon, contribute, a monetary remuneration for the site? And it seems like there wasn't, but there was consideration because of mo, affordable housing units were being placed there.
I think it was a mix of both, by recollection of this, where there was some monetary, but what would have been if the affordable hadn't been asked? Or was?
No, I, I, I just wanted to come out, because I, I do know the story.
Okay, sorry. I did, sorry.
But most of us don't. So, the question really is, so, to, to elucidate everyone here, that there was a monetary payment. It was less than a normal payment, based on the fact that MIH units were being provided.
Correct.
So, now, my question, um, becomes, again, based on Commissioner Gold's question, when you say that, when Teal said the construction has started, I just wanna really define that. It's, it's demolition that started, because you can't get a footprint into the building until, into DOB until this action is approved, because we're, we're, we're moving the building back. Is that correct? Or did they already?
No. So, no changes are happening with the special permit. This is merely a renewal. And so, they are already developing and/or have permits pulled based on the approval of the special permit in 2018. And because this is a ten-year term, there are, there is the first four-year term, and then there's a renewal for a thir, a three-year term, and then another renewal is required for any sites that may not have vested under the special permit.
So, then that means that their DOB application already considered the fact that the building had to be set back. Is that correct?
Correct. Correct.
I just, I just find it sometimes, um, difficult to understand, you know, you're coming to us for an approval about setting back the building, but you already have your plans into the building department. So, there's nothing that we can do here but say, yes, at some time, at some point. So, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to understand here.
In this case, it's more or less saying, yes, we're okay with no changes being made to the proposal. That's more or less what we're, we're looking at in this particular action.
I do understand that, but the building footprint didn't change. So, I just wanna?
It, it did not.
It did not?
It's the same, it's the same that was approved in 2018.
So, how, how did you pull it back away from the highway, then? Oh, from the, from the?
That was, that was already part of the 2018 approval.
Got it. Understood. Understood. I'm confused then. Thank you.
I know. This is a very confusing special permit and, and explanation. So, we are here for the questions.
I do, I do recall, there was some, when Borough President Katz had approved this, I think it was, there was some consideration, and, and Teal alluded to the public engagement process for the parcels underneath the, 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 the Queensborough Bridge pas, um, passages. Is that something you can share with us now, or, or something that comes out later?
Um, I mean, so, there, there is interest in trying to utilize the space under the ramp on the southeastern side of Jackson as open space. Long Island City, especially in the core of Long Island City, around Court Square, there's a real dearth of open space opportunities. And that's where we've seen the majority of new development and new population come into the area. And so, we're literally looking for any little piece of land to try and turn into an open space opportunity for this community. And so, there have been active conversations for a number of years with DOT and with the developers for a developer-funded and maintained open space that uses a portion of that area underneath the ramp. There were some pre-existing contracts that dictated the use of that land for a term that had to do with con, uh, construction materials that DOT was planning to store there. And so, there are, you know, the conversations are, are ongoing with this because of some of the other uses. But, but there is certainly an interest in, in wanting to see this move forward in the near future, so that way, the community has more open space.
No, that does make sense, because in, in the Bronx, they took the, the area underneath the Brockner, and they were rebuilding the bridge, the Hundred Point Bridge. And so, the community got together and said, what can we do under here? And they're, they're putting actually a market out there, which makes kind of sense. It also brightens up the underpass, and people feel safer to walk through it. So, that makes a lot of sense. So, thank you.
Absolutely. And I do just wanna provide one clarification to something you had mentioned earlier. I, I do wanna be clear that these, the affordable units here are not MIH units. We used the, um, the development rights to kind of synthesize or create an equivalency, but they're not technically market rate. But through the disposition agreement, they're able to make them permanently affordable. So, I just wanted to provide that clarity for everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Benjamin, followed by Commissioner Osorio.
Um, oh, sorry. Sorry, sorry. Go ahead.
Followed by Commissioner Bozard.
Sorry. Who actually, who actually is very familiar with this deal.
I just wanted to know why they could not have gone to BSA for substantial completion? Or could they have?
That's, that's so, so.
Invested there.
So, the, the BSA vesting, uh, uh, authority in the zoning is for, um, sort of as-of-right building permits that they receive. You get a, you get your as-of-right building permit, and you go, and if you don't get your, your, uh, foundations in in time, then you go to the BSA. If there's a zoning change, right?
Correct.
Here, what we have is a special permit that is, it very explicitly writes out that the City Planning Commission gives the renewal. So, therefore, the commission is, is the, is the body for the renewals. It's not the, the, the board in this case. It's, it's, it's similar, but very different, um, yeah, set of provisions.
Thank you. Commissioner Osorio, Commissioner Bozard, Commissioner Rappert.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I had a quick question. In your presentation, when you refer to the community board's, uh, request to set aside the, or to return the twenty thousand square feet at ground level, your presentation said for community facility, but their letter says for affordable housing, studio space, artist studio space, and community facility. I'm wondering if there was an update since the letter, or whether, yes?
So, my, my sense is that when the community board submitted this particular letter, they also submitted their 2018 letter. Um, so, they, I put it in the package as they submitted it. So, for, and correct me if I'm wrong, because you might have it pulled up, but I, for the renewal, I took the language straight from their letter that just said they feel like, like they saw the public parking garage as kind of a community benefit, and they would want to see community facility space in its place in something that feels equivalent to them, which is twenty thousand square feet. Um, but I believe that some of these other, um, conditions, maybe have been in 2018, where they might have been asking for, um, certain levels of affordability and whatnot.
Maybe I'm, I'm misunderstanding this, but I'm li, I'm looking at the 2022 letter.
Mm-hmm. Um, I don't have it in front of me, but just from my recollection, I just remember there being kind of the first page having just the two conditions that I wrote out, and then the following pages are from previous recommendations. Um, it's something that I may need to follow up on now.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's just interesting, and sounds like an opportunity, given the lack of MIH requirements here and so forth.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bozard.
Um, thanks. Uh, my question was just following up on that MIH, the kind of synthetic MIH. Are those gonna go through? Is HPD still gonna manage those through the lottery? Okay.
Yes.
So, it, that, and it'll get enforced by MI, by HPD?
Correct. Yerma. So, it will, it will still follow all of the terms, and for the most part, people who live in those units wouldn't notice any difference in the process that they're going through versus any other, any standard MIH proposal.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Rappert.
Sir, Osorio.
Great. Thank you. Others? Anybody else? Okay, so this is one of those, uh, moments where we're gonna take the vote, and we're gonna seek, uh, assent, um, to send an approval bill, approval letter to the Department of Buildings here on the renewal of the special permit. Um, so, I will ask at this time for assent by voice vote to send an approval letter to the Buildings Department, um, on the renewal of these, uh, two special permits. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Ryan?
Yes. The ninth item on our agenda is a discussion of an expected city council modification. Um, we typically try to do these when we have the letter in hand, but in this case, we expect the city council will be sending the commission a formal letter of modification on Tuesday, and then we will need to, to handle this on Wednesday. So, rather than, you know, send you something and give you, you know, a, a very brief time to, to mull it over and understand it, we're going to talk through what we know now, and then, um, send you the letter, and then have another discussion and a, a vote on, on Wednesday. So, I'll?
We're just getting so prescient about what the city council is going to do, that we can anticipate it even before it happens. Okay, Jonah, go ahead.
Thanks, Dan. Um, good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, so, as Ryan said, um, the department, I would like to share a city council modification to the Ninth Street rezoning application. Uh, and again, due to, uh, scheduling constraints with the upcoming stated meeting, uh, we're presenting the modification now for a discussion, uh, ahead of a city council land use vote tomorrow. Next slide. And just as a refresher, um, I know some of you, uh, were not on the commission when this first came through, um, and was voted on. Um, but, uh, this is an application for rezoning from M-2-1 to an M-1-4 R-7-A district, as well as a zoning tax amendment to designate an MIH area and mixed-use district. And then finally, a special permit to waive off-street parking to facilitate a nine-story mixed-use development with forty-eight units, thirteen of which would be permanently affordable, and ground-floor commercial space in the Gowanus neighborhood of Brooklyn. Next slide, please. The city council proposes to modify the proposed zoning from M-1-4 R-7-A to M-1-4 R-6-B, while also updating the zoning tax amendment for, uh, for MX district and the special permit, uh, based on the new zoning district. On the left is a, a table summarizing, uh, the original proposal and proposed modification, which would effectively reduce the allowed FAR, um, by over half for residential, half for community facilities, as well as, uh, lowering the base and building heights. We, uh, estimate that the modification will result in a net reduction of approximately twenty-five to thirty-five, uh, total units and seven to ten affordable units on the, um, main development site, and an additional, uh, twenty-seven, um, total units and seven affordable units on a second, uh, development site within the project area. Uh, with respect to the rationale for the modification, for context, city council land use, uh, did provide- rationale for the modification, for context, city council land use, uh, did provide some, uh, background indicating that the block is similar in character to nearby narrow, uh, side streets, uh, mapped with R6B. And then in the context of the growth anticipated in the recently approved Gowanus neighborhood plan, um, they also say that preserving the low-scale, uh, low-rise, uh, character of existing buildings on the block outweighed considerations for increasing the number of units at the development sites. Uh, so while the department does recognize that the proposed modification is in scope with the land use application and environmental review, uh, nonetheless, we wanted to, uh, state that we did believe that the original R7A proposal, as also unanimously approved by the CPC, uh, was more appropriate. Although this, uh, portion of Ninth Street is classified as narrow, uh, under zoning, it does function as an active east-west corridor located within a couple blocks of two subway stations that provide close access to major job hubs like, uh, downtown Brooklyn and Lower Manhattan. Uh, we also felt that the R7A was consistent with the 2019 IBC vision plan, which identified Ninth Street and Third Avenue as corridors that can accommodate additional height and density. And lastly, uh, we want to note that under R6B, uh, most of the lots within the rezoning area, uh, would likely be built below the threshold to comply with MIH, um, if they were to be redeveloped over time. Um, so with that, we wanted again, say that, uh, we do believe that the, the proposed modification is within scope, and then I'm happy to elaborate further. Thanks.
Thanks, Jonah. Can you just say, uh, and I obviously was joking a little bit about being prescient. We, we do have reason to believe this actually is what the council is going to do tomorrow. Um, but tell us a little bit about why you believe that with this modification, the lots here are most likely to build or be built below the threshold that actually will even trigger MIH?
Absolutely. So as you can see, a lot of the lots are quite narrow. They're, uh, 25 feet in width, um, 100 feet in depth. So when you consider a 2,500-foot lot that can be developed at, let's say, over, uh, 4.6 FAR, which is what, uh, R7A allows, um, that would absolute, that would put you above the threshold for at least, uh, likely 10 or more units, or the 12,500 square foot threshold. Um, so we, that was something we also shared with, uh, city council land use and the council member before, you know, for their awareness of that. It's, uh, Shahana Hanif. Um, and, uh, the other factor too is we're considering, we also want to ensure activity along, uh, Ninth Street. So we're not just thinking about what total residential FAR can be built there, but also that together with, um, like an active ground floor space as well.
Thanks. Other questions or comments? Commissioner?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks. Thanks for the presentation. And, and this, this may be, I mean, my question is, is also sort of wondering what was the rationale back then? But looking at the flooding maps, it sounds like the, the part of the, the site is in the 0.2% right now, but compromised, it sounds, by the 2050 projections. And so I'm just wondering wh- what is, how does that, what are the implications of this? Um, and the second part of the question is, to what extent can a, creating additional preferable land, um, has been considered here? And then the last part of the question is, okay, if there's no additional parking, um, what are the public benefits? How can they be maximized? What is the plan to do?
Sure. So I'll start with the question on flooding. Um, I would say that, that's an issue that, um, affects all projects in Gowanus. And we, uh, really adopt, uh, almost like a multiple lines of defense strategy, um, from kind of broader, uh, like citywide efforts to address flooding. Um, but then in this particular, for this project, we work closely with the applicant on how they're able to comply with Appendix G and build resiliently. Um, during the public review process, they also, um, presented a series of sustainability measures, including rain gardens and effort to retain storm water as part of their development. Um, and then, uh, in tandem, we're also closely coordinated with DEP. There are a few active projects that they have within this area. Um, not to directly address, uh, sea level rise per se, but, um, drainage infrastructure, which is a major, uh, challenge because a lot of water flows, um, towards the canal. And there have been, um, uh, many projects that have been, um, trying to divert some of that storm water from CSO tanks to, um, high-level storm sewers in the area. Um, and then, sorry, can you read me the la- this, the last question?
Yeah, yeah. I was asking, I mean, rephrasing the, the last part of the question, is that I, I think that it's a little bit of a missed opportunity if we don't take advantage of the fact that not only here we're dealing with potential floodwater, but we're also dealing with contaminated water that could be moving this way. So to what extent can this be an opportunity to build infrastructure that is going to do both? If that's not going to happen, connected, and we're in connection with the, with the parking, uh, infrastructure, what are the public benefits? How can we sort of, eh, negotiate or, or bring back the public benefits that would have otherwise gone into building that?
So I just want to clarify, the parking waiver is still going to be pursued by the applicant. Um, and part of the rationale for that was, um, because this is a, a bicycle route, a truck route, uh, we wanted to disincentivize, um, an additional curb cut, which could contribute to, to more congestion. Um, but then, uh, specifically on, um, I just want to clarify too, that the, the applicant agreed to dry floodproof some of the, the commercial space, um, and consider, uh, uh, how the seller would be built out to protect against flooding as well. Um, but to the larger question about how we're addressing this, I, I would, I would frame it as, um, we pushed hard for the applicant to incorporate a number of sustainability measures, as well as the community board, um, council member and others. Um, but I think that the bigger picture of infrastructure improvements relies more on like us closely coordinating with, uh, DEP and others, um, because it's a, it's a larger issue that, um, kind of affects many different parts of the neighborhood.
Thank you. I mean, the, the, I, I would love to continue that conversation, because it's, it's, in my mind, this is not just about dry proofing the building. This is about addressing, um, potential contamination that could be coming from the Gowanus Canal in an area that is a half, like a, a block or two away from a significant maritime industrial area, active industrial area where chemicals are allowed as of right. So this is a larger issue, I think, that goes beyond sort of the lot. But to your point, would love to sort of understand, what is our policy? What is our position, the department's position in that regard?
And I know, I just know really quickly that there will be a, what's called an E designation placed on the property. So as part of any, um, uh, ground-up construction, they'll, they'll actually be required to submit and prepare a, um, a remediation plan, um, to remove any hazardous materials. Um, and then on top of that, there are also specific requirements of where the, um, uh, in connection with air quality analyses, where the, um, stack locations for venting out any, um, air from the project will be. Um, so there, there are certain measures in place, um, but those are typically done, uh, after the approval process.
There is a, I mean, and we could perhaps, this is a, a, a larger briefing on the, um, on the sort of efforts to clean up and address the issues in the Gowanus Canal. We've had re- in recent memory, several land use actions that were sort of to help facilitate that, things like dispositions and, and acquisitions for, you know, DEP to build infrastructure that would help facilitate that. But there is, there's an ongoing, you know, effort and plan that I think fits into all of this as a, as a, as a sort of, as a larger scale than, than beyond this, this single site, which I think you're right, you know, to ask about, but it, but it is, um, only a, a piece of that plan, uh, plan.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. And, and I would certainly welcome the opportunity to talk about it, because in my mind, this is not going to be the last time that we're, we're going to be addressing a change in use really close to an IBC and an SMIA, where otherwise, where we're going to taking, we're going to be taking away the potential for future industrial jobs in exchange for, in this case, I would think, public infrastructure to address climate change impact and contamination together.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would also plug the, um, the work we did on the vision plan, and maybe we can share more of it. And in turn, we would love to hear your feedback, um, because I think this is in, planning for Gowanus i- is a, is a effort that requires very careful consideration of the connection between industrial businesses and residents on every block. Um, and this particular application is a great example of that. Um, I would say in general, we do believe that allowing residential is compatible industrial uses, but for IBCs, we do want to, um, you know, ensure that there's a buffer in some cases, or, um, that residential doesn't, um, kind of approach upon the operations of businesses. So, um, it's definitely an ongoing conversation, and maybe we can, we can share more.
Thank you, Commissioner Bozard.
Um, I just want to say, I think this is a huge missed opportunity, um, to build what we thought was appropriate density, um, in this area. I wonder even whether, has the applicant indicated that they would move forward with the project at 2.2?
They, uh, they have not at the moment. I think if this is still really-
Yeah.
-fresh, um-
Yeah, I mean, I think going from 13 affordable units to three, I mean, it's just a huge missed opportunity where we're trying to, need to build more, um, need to try to generate more affordable units on private land that may otherwise not. Um, the neighborhood's now going to take on the impact of the construction, take on the added, um, a- added units, added people without, I see it as public benefit, those additional affordable units. So it's just, it's a huge missed opportunity, it seems. Not for you to respond to, just a comment to put in the air.
I, I, I'll associate myself with those remarks. I certainly agree with that. And the, the number of units is a significant, uh, loss. It would go from 48 with 13 MIH to 13 to 23 with possibly-
Three to six.
No, three to six, maybe none-
Yeah.
-on MIH. Um, so at a moment where we are, uh, we are struggling on all fronts to put people in homes, I think that, uh, that point is a good one. Um, okay, all right. Um, we're going to do a very brief special session on, uh, special review session on Wednesday to actually take up what the city council does. And it's really going to be a, a scope determination on Wednesday. Um, but, uh, that will be, uh, you know, that will be, uh, not a substantive presentation like what we've just had. We will just, uh, evaluate that and be on our way. Okay. Uh, Ryan, let's, uh, let's finish up today-
Sure.
-with the great borough of Staten Island.
So, yes. So we have, uh, future votes on, uh, for consideration on October 26, 2022. Our, uh, Clove Road, Emerson Drive, 1220 Forest Hill Road, 52 Nestle Street, 107 Seguin Avenue, 935 Darlington Avenue. These are all, uh, actions pursuant to special districts on Staten Island. Um, they are authorizations and certifications, and the, uh, staff believe that the findings have been met and are recommending approval on Wednesday.
Right. Any questions or comments on those?
There was no explanation, any idea? Did they just always say no? I think it was the one with Mr. Kelly.
Is this, uh, Clove, Clove Road, Emerson Drive?
Maybe.
Yeah, I believe there was some, some concern about the, the density, um, on, on that, and, you know, sometimes it's just a long vacant lot in a neighborhood that then is, when it's slated for development, you know, sort of raises, raises concerns.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, seeing, uh, no other questions or comments, we're going to be adjourned for the day, and we will see you all here on Wednesday. Uh, thank you all. We're adjourned.
Thanks, staff.